Everybody, let's see if the commissioners have any comments in the deliberation process. Let's do that and see where we are. And for those outside in the lobby, please feel free, come on back in. So, all right. Oh, wait, one more. We gotta wait for Director Fu before we start. All right, we're gonna start the deliberation process. We are back. See what the commissioners has to say. Well, first, before we start then, I'll say something simple. We have an awesome planning commission. We have so many different views here. I'm so excited we get these different views. I just want to thank my fellow commissioners. I know this is a tough issue. I hope they vote their conscience. I hope they provide some constructive feedback, open to any ideas that can bring come up rise, and I think it's a very, very important part of this process. So, thank you, everybody here. So, go ahead, Commissioner Feng. Sorry to interrupt you there. Are you ready to go?
All right. So, I mentioned this before, that I had some concerns about whether the EIR addendum was appropriate. The first part, well, okay, yeah, the first part, I would say is, there was no actual justification in the resolution for this abbreviated approval schedule, and I'm concerned about that, the short approval schedule. Very little public notice. Everything was done at the minimum, I believe. Normally, for an area that's had as much contention around environmental issues as we've been seeing here, I mean, I would actually say that probably with five years of tussling on that, there was, you know, there was not even a scoping discussion, you know, to just take public input about what are the things that would matter in the consideration here. And so, there were a number of things, you know, issues, ones that I don't particularly subscribe heavily to, but things like toxic issues. I think there is a lot of concern about traffic, and that there are a lot of issues around traffic that are not, you know, where I believe this is out of, the ER is out of scope with regard to the, to the impacts. There was a site, it was mentioned earlier about the low number of notifications that were sent out. As part of that, you know, everything was done, you know, everything that were, you know, where there was 10 days of notice required, there was only 10 days. 96 mailed notices in a 300-foot radius, you know, there's 22,000 residential units in Cupertino, according to the census, so the coverage of that mail, you know, of that mailed notice was 0.4 percent. You know, when the Valco-specific plan was, was in process, you know, we had 100% of coverage in town, you know, by mail, as well as, of course, many, many, many public meetings. I also wanted to just raise that, it's probably two weeks ago now, in the approval hearing in the, for the city council, for the Cupertino Village Hotel, Councilman Willie complained that the 300-foot radius was insufficient for people to be able to give public input, you know, on that hotel, a hotel which was, you know, it was actually, you know, we had some discussion here about the size of how many units would be allowed. So, it's a little bit bigger than the Hyatt Hotel, completely compliant with the general plan in every aspect except for hotel allocation, and that was an issue where there wasn't enough, where, where the council was complaining there wasn't enough outreach to the community. So, you know, when you're talking about Valco, and this is something where, you know, of course, there's been a long history of controversy here. You could argue on one hand that 389 units was what was being discussed five years ago, and it was quite controversial. So, I don't think that, you know, and as has been cited here, the opportunities for people to weigh in, you know, obviously, not a whole lot of people showed up for something that's, you know, been a big, 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 big problem along the way. And finally, related to, to the notification issues, well, you know, I think we're all aware that the FPPC imposes rules and guidelines around conflict of interest. There was determination that the city got that Vice Mayor Chow could participate in Valco voting because the impact, the quote with that was, given the massive size of this project, it's expected to become a regional destination. It appears the project will affect all the residences identified in this, in this particular segment. That was 3,800-foot, a 3,800-foot radius. So, I think that we, it's been totally inadequate in terms of, of the, of the outreach, the visibility to the community. You know, this is a special meeting tonight, so, I mean, it's, we couldn't even fit this into the regular planning commission. Anyway, so, I guess I just would want to say from, from a, from a notification standpoint, I think it's very difficult for the ER. I'll come back around. I'll let other people talk for a while. I'll come back around and talk about some of the issues that I think specifically are issues, but I think the ability for anybody to even think about what might be, you know, what are the implications of the discussion here? You know, if, if you picked up this report last Thursday and looked at it, one of the things you would immediately see is, we haven't even talked about where, where the, you know, 75-foot residential structure might be. And that, well, I, you know, I suspect people want to have something to say about that. So, I'll, I'll let others speak at this point.
Yeah, so, adding to Commissioner Feng's question, I just want to ask the staff a few questions as well. I mean, do we provide the required legal notice in this process?
Yes, we provided the required legal notice, yep, and that's documented in the staff report.
Okay. And I have a few other questions, and make sure that, you know, in this process, right, have we gone through extensive legal review?
Have gone through extensive legal review for all the resolutions, drafting the staff reports, working with a consultant on the addendum, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. Commissioner Saxina, Commissioner Takahashi, any comments?
I think I'll defer to Commissioner Takahashi.
He's drafting his, let's go. You're up, too. I will stall for time for everybody. Go ahead, Commissioner Feng.
I'll go ahead again, then. So, one of the things that I'm, one of the things I'm concerned about is the impact. We believe, the, the statement in the EIR addendum has been that the envelope that was looked at is larger than, than the effect of this proposal. Therefore, there was no need to redo the ER, but in fact, let's see, I guess, the first thing, the first thing I think I would look at is, under the current set of proposals here, there's up to 600,000 square feet of retail allowed, I believe, across the zone, but it's actually 1.2 million. It either is or isn't, and, and so, I think that one of the things that would be an issue here is that the EIR of 2014, completed in 2014, studied 600,000 square feet of, of retail at Valco, not 1.2 million, even though that was what was existing at the time. The explanation at that time was that the city could not support retail or additional retail at that time. So, so the plan, the plan and all the analysis, in every scenario, was at 600, well, 400 to 600,000 square feet of, of space there. So, so I think one, one of the things I think would be an issue is that, you know, we've raised the issue of, one of the justifications for this is to look at jobs/housing ratio, and so, one of the areas that this actually starts to become an impact is at, because, because you're potentially looking at whether 600,000 or 400, or 1.2 million, there actually are jobs associated with that, and that would actually disturb that, disturb that ratio. So, that's separate from, you know, I would look, I guess I would look at this, five years ago, when the EIR was done, it was done where an office worker would be, was calculated 300 square feet, you know, it was one office worker per 300 square feet of the allocated office space, and one retail worker per 450 square feet. So, so that has immediate effects, the, the amount of traffic attributable to retail. And, you know, I know the, the environmental consultant this year is about three times, three times that of, of, of the office space.
Commissioner Feng, which one has more traffic, you're saying? I just want to be clear.
Retail.
Okay, so having more retail is more traffic versus office?
Yes, that's right, because, because there are people coming and going.
Yeah, but it's not concentrated during peak hours.
Yes, but that's actually, that distribution is, that distribution is accounted for in the EIR. So, one of the things that, one of the things that happens is that 600,000 square feet of retail space can generate very close to the same amount of traffic as the, as the, you know, 2 million square feet of office. So, I think that one of the things that, that you would need to look at, and again, and that is all in the context of 2014, not 2019, so I think that one of the things you would want to look at is, are those ratios, what are the ratios, the correct ratios today? What is the traffic generation today? The current state of Valco is different than it was before, and you can make an argument that, you know, the old ER reflected the state of Valco at that time, but these are all things where I think that it's warranted, particularly with the high interest the community has expressed about traffic impacts, that it's something that would really need to be looked at in a new EIR. Particularly, if, if this resolution set were to be enacted in the, in the form that they are, I believe you're actually allowing 1.2 million square feet of retail, and that will be much, much higher than anything that was looked at in the ER, in terms of traffic impact and actually worker impact. Again, not as high as the office space would have been, but, I don't know. I'm not a believer in the, I'm not a believer of jobs/housing ratio, so one of our speakers spoke to that. I'm not actually a believer that, that if you magically get to 1.5, that everything will be great, right? But, one of the things that's interesting is, I did the calculation based on the amount of office space and the amount of retail space for, for, for the four, well, for the three, you know, well, for the three proposals that have been brought forth at Valco. So, the Valco-specific plan, Tier Two, I would actually see that being at a 2.2 to 1 ratio, job, jobs-to-housing ratio. That's based on 5,000 jobs, 5,000 office workers, and 1,000 retail workers. The Valco-specific plan, Tier One, was actually a little bit better, at 1.58 to 1. That's 2,500 office workers and 1,300 retail workers. The Tier One had the characteristic of having a larger retail space and a much, much smaller office space. The Hills of Valco is actually the worst, the worst calculation because it had extremely low number of housing, and it, of course, had large allocations otherwise. So, 6,700 office workers, 1,300 retail workers, but only 389 homes for a 20.5 to 1 ratio. Yeah, that's not a great, that's not a great plan. If there were any issue with the Valco plan, the original Hills of Valco plan, it was very low number of homes, right? And then, relative to those others, for this general plan amendment, if it were calculated at 600,000 square feet of retail, 1,300, again, 1,300 retail workers, no office workers, that's, but only 389 homes, that's a 3.34 to 1 jobs-to-housing ratio. So, if, if one of the objectives here, you know, I believe, I believe the objective of this, the council's objective of this, is to try to, try to thwart new legislation, new state legislation regarded, regarding streamlined residential approval, but if there, if they, you know, if the, if the alternative story is, if you want to just tell the story, but we want to improve the jobs/housing ratio, then you really need to build Tier Two or Tier One instead. So, so I think that those, those things together, from a jobs/housing ratio, that's a note for the staff to bring forward to the council that there's, that they need to look at that a little more closely. One of the solutions to that, one of the ways to fix that problem, is to put more housing in, and I think at 800 units, you start to get there, but of course, that's very different than what they, what they're trying to do here with the minimization effort that's going on. And then, and then from a EIR standpoint, I think that you need to look very closely at the traffic numbers because I don't believe that those are within the scope of what was, was discussed before. Certainly, very, very close to the bounds, if not, if not out of those bounds. And, and again, I think it's worthy of a new EIR to measure this, you know, it's a very important, it's a very important thing to measure, probably the most important characteristic in terms of what most people care about in town.
Thank you, Commissioner Feng. Commissioner Saxina?
Commissioner Feng, if I understand you correctly, you believe the impact of the 1.2 million retail is going to be much worse than the 2 million square foot of office?
That's, that's correct. That's, that's correct. The amount of traffic generated by retail per square foot is about three times higher, distributed over the course of the day, but there's still, those are all still real trips. And, and that actually, if I could, if I could swing back around, there's a reason that the, the traffic matters, and this is something that, again, from a policy standpoint, you have to decide, there were decisions made, there are mitigations identified, you know, the traffic, there's a number of traffic mitigations. The very first traffic mitigation, it's probably seven pages long in the 2014 EIR. These are the impacted intersections that happened as a result. Those impacted intersections are all identified as a result of, of assumptions that were made about the distribution of where office space, where retail space, where residential space were around town. I mean, those calculations are all in the EIR addendum. So, and, and, you know, you can see those calculations repeated for the Valco-specific plan, so you have much newer numbers that are very, that are very close, but I think that the, the really important thing to remember there is that mitigations were determined, were identified to address the impacts of this specific layout, and now you're talking about something that's a very different, a different, very different kind of layout, particularly if you are, or if you're sending the land use here to have that 1.2 million square feet of retail, right? It's not exactly, I had a discussion with staff about this, you know, when you build home, when you, when we, the way this is being done, you could build homes by right without a, you know, without a discretionary hearing. It wasn't clear to me, it sounds like, if I came, if I came with a million-square-foot shopping center plan, whether that, you know, to what extent, to what extent is there a discretionary hearing that could stop that? But, if in fact, that's, you know, the reality is, if you want to be within the envelope of the EIR, you would have to stay at 600,000 square feet, which means that the balance of acreage, you know, whatever, 37 acres, effectively has no, has no land use. It is, it is, you know, there's nothing you can build there.
Commissioner Takahashi, all yours.
Just one point for the, for the record, as, as you continue, just, the addendum does have specific trip generation figures, and Table 4.1 on page seven of the addendum calculates out the net increase to commercial, the gross increase to commercial trips from the increased allocation that you allocated, but then shows an offset from the reduction in office trips and the reduced multifamily housing. The EIR studied up to 800 units, so there, those figures are included in the addendum and, and can be reviewed.
Commissioner Saxina, go ahead.
So, just to build upon Commissioner Feng's questions, so, based on your opinion, the existing EIR would suffice?
So, the, the legal standard for preparing subsequent environmental review is if there are changes in the circumstances or changes in the project that trigger new or more severe significant impacts than had previously been disclosed in the original EIR. It is, I think, also to Commissioner Feng's point, it's important to recognize that the mitigation measures from that original EIR continue to apply. So, for example, hazard, hazardous materials and were identified as a significant impact in the original EIR, there's mitigation to prepare a site-specific analysis and have a Department of Toxic Substance Control approval before site plan goes forward. Those mitigation measures continue to apply so that the development under these changed circumstances wouldn't have a more severe impact because that mitigation measure would, would still apply. The addendum further documents that the, the traffic impacts, even with the, the increased retail capacity compared to the reduced office capacity, results in a lower daily trip and AM and PM peak trip threshold, so the traffic impacts would be less significant than had been disclosed in the original EIR.
Oh, sorry, and that's typical of what, what, that's a typical kind of traffic study, correct?
I'm not sure I follow that question.
Looking at retail and the trips, the trip study is using typical standard numbers from that?
Yeah, so the, it was used, using the standard IT assumptions for trip, for trip generation to prepare those numbers.
And just to clarify, that was assuming 1.2 million square feet of retail?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, 600, right? 600K at, at Valco?
Well, it, I'm sorry, it depends on the, the addendum, the addendum studies 1.2 million square feet of office at Valco. It studies the change, the changed project.
You mean retail?
Retail.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. I missed, I missed.
Sorry, retail.
What time is it? Yeah, so, 1.2 square, million square feet of commercial retail at Valco, no office, and the 600, approximately 620 units of residential compared to in 1990, the 2014 EIR, 2 million square feet of office. It was assumed 625,000 and change for the commercial retail and 800 residential units at the time, a buffer, because it wasn't known at that point exactly what the final unit count would end up being in the housing element.
Thank you.
Commissioner Takahashi, you've been waiting patiently.
All right, so, there's been a lot of good discussion, a lot of good discussion tonight, a lot of good points brought up. Infrastructure, obviously, being one that's, one we haven't really significantly dug into in terms of the impact. It's, it's, it's really an interesting situation regionally, so while we look at this as a Cupertino issue, which it is because the, the project is located in Cupertino, really, we're talking about a regional issue for the valley as a whole. So, my concern with the current proposal centers around the, the fact that the bar has been set pretty low for the number of housing units. While there is some bonus available, it, it does look like the intent is to maximize commercial, and points about what does commercial do for traffic? Well, the other element is the employees, which, which Commissioner Feng brought up in terms of that traffic, but I guess the other element is, none of those employees will ever be able to live in the city. There's just, if you're working in retail, you're coming from pretty far away. So, as the state really tries to move towards vehicle miles traveled, the impact of significant retail there is a lot more miles traveled. On the flip side, I don't believe that, that much space will actually be successful as a retail, and therefore, I don't think it actually will generate the, the number of employees that, that, that you could say come from a successful retail element. The landscape of retail is incredibly dynamic, and, you know, the number of failed businesses is only increasing, and so, what the future holds, you know, if you believe Amazon, it's going to be drone delivery, and so, you know, why do you even need to, to develop large-scale retail? Sure seems like a, a poor investment by anybody to build a significant retail center. There's, there's already so much competition that, that comes from Valley Fair and Stanford. I just don't see how, you know, there were lots of efforts during the past 10, 15 years to put in a food court, to try to make Valco successful under previous ownership, put in the movie theater, all those things were not successful. Traditional mall is not the answer. Something unique, something different, probably would be the only chance for that, that, that much floor space to succeed in terms of the 1.2 million. So, while I know there's a significant constituency of residents that believe that the mall can succeed, I'm not one of them. So, what does that leave us? We really, you know, I'm just going to stress this again, there's, there's got to be a solution that, that works. It's the biggest piece of land left in the city to develop, and I think everybody's in agreement that we want something done there. Having a shell for some period of X more years really sure seems like an unfortunate side effect of our inability as a community to figure this out. I thought four, five, six years ago, surely we'd be able to figure this out, and here we are tonight, not one inch closer to figuring this out. So, what does that leave in terms of my hope for the future? It's pretty grim, to be perfectly honest, in terms of that, that project, because this, this division in our community, there's not, doesn't appear that that's going to become resolved, where we can figure out a compromise that works for the community as a whole. So, I think what's on the table is, is rushed. I mean, if you look at the hypocrisy of, of what's being done now versus what the, some community group said was done by the last city council, it's the exact same thing, right? So, so let's, let's try to be a little better in terms of just citizens that are trying to do the right thing. Let's take a step back, let's reassess and, and come up with a solution that, that, that makes that space something we can all be proud of. And so, that's, you know, with the noticing, while sure it meets the letter of the law, sure doesn't seem like it is adequate for the, the magnitude of this project, so I completely agree on that front. And, you know, there was a lot of community input that went into the original elements. Can some of that be resurrected at least from the standpoint of just understanding where kind of that center is? Because I, this is, you know, I've seen this drag on now for years and years, and it just doesn't seem like we, we have a path to, to resolution, other than starting over at ground zero. So, anyway, that's all I have to say.
Thank you for your comments, Commissioner Takahashi. Commissioner Saxina?
Commissioner Takahashi, you said, "starting over at ground zero." So, how do you suggest we do that?
So, what I said was, it sure feels like we have to start all over at ground zero.
We are, at that point.
Right, right. And, and I don't know how many community meetings we had in the '15, '16 timeframe, but there were a lot of good ideas, and, and I think that they were mostly documented, talking about what is the adequate mix. Just from my perspective, it always seemed like the owner was really pushing to maximize the office, and that, that has always been a sore spot. And, a willingness to come off of that significant office allocation, and at this point in time, shift to housing, that wasn't necessarily the, the environment back when we originally were, were having these discussions. The criticality of, of the housing crisis really hadn't hit home at that point in time. We were, it, it wasn't such a significant issue for us. I mean, how many of our kids can afford to buy a house in this town, right? I can't afford to buy my own house right now, just to be perfectly honest, and that's a problem. And, without affordable housing, all the things that we've talked about in terms of teachers being able to live here, I know for a fact that a lot of the teachers that taught my kids moved, they left the state, actually, just because, you know, they, they had a family, and they wanted to have a house, and they wanted their, so they moved to Oregon, and another, another move to Arizona, I mean, just, it goes on and on. And so, while the people that are here and live here enjoy the benefit of tremendous equity in their home and feel like, hey, this is great, I'm sitting on a $2 million house, that doesn't bode well for a long-term viability. So, housing is a key issue. It's become much more critical than, than it, it was back when we first discussed this project. So, I would strongly advocate, let's take some of that original, let's, let's have some level of office, but be very controlled, 500, 750,000 square feet. but be very controlled, 500, 750,000 square feet to just improve the viability, but, but really shift to, to housing with, with some level of retail to make it an active space, right? We want a, a place where there can be residents, retail and some office that, that make it an active space that, that people want to go to. How do we get there? I wish I knew because that would be fantastic.
I think that's what it boils down to, how do we get there?
Right.
You know, this was my first time seeing Mr. Moles, I've seen his letter. And I, and I heard him in this, his comments with a season desist in a pretty threatening tone. And to me, it didn't look like a person or a group which was ready to tango, honestly. So in some way, the question is, how do we get people to tango?
Right.
I think, and, so that's where it starts.
Yeah.
If somebody is not willing to tango, do we drag them to the dance floor? And to me, from whatever I've heard and seen and the tone, it looks like that. So, well, that's, that's where, I think all of us want something to happen, something good to happen, something which is consistent, something which, make sure that the community by itself is also compensated for the infrastructure it will have to build. This is an infill project. An infill project by definition is much more rewarding than the developer building. Something similar 15 miles away or because of the weird pricing structure of the Bay Area where schools end up dominating the house price a lot, where just building five miles away, things would change things. So how do we accommodate for that? So let's suppose we have 1,000 children who eventually occupy, like whatever hundred, like whatever things we do. Do we have the space or would we have the money to actually open a new school? I recently read an article which said that Sandhill wanted to open a brand new school. And I was wondering where, where the money was or what plan that was because I do remember donations of say 10 or 20 million, but I don't think that's enough to open a new school. So to me, those are the fundamental questions that, you know, we, how do we make sure that whatever we build doesn't impose a huge amount of burden on the current residents, both in terms of the costs they have to build, in terms of the infrastructure to support, and in terms of traffic and other things which determine the quality of life? And like, those are the aspects which I don't think have been touched upon in the level of detail or the level of scrutiny which they should have and which with my knowledge of finance would have been possible if we approached it with the right attitude. So I think to me, those are the questions which we have to answer. And the question is, how do we even go about starting having those discussions? Well, to, to give you a context, the school districts of CUSD and FUSD over the past decade have funded 1 billion. So I won't say 1 billion, and it's reminding me of Austin Powers talking about $1 billion. But we have funded $1 billion of bonds to support our schools and keep it running. And I don't know how much getting the land to build a new school or expand, expansion will cost, but are we accounting for that? Are we accounting for the park space or how well we'll do that? So all those questions come together and I, unfortunately, what happened in the past didn't injure the confidence that those things were being taken account. And the developer who, who prefers to build here was approaching them in what I would call a good faith approach. And I hope we can do something where we can get that to happen.
Thank you, Commissioner Saxina.
I haven't a chance to talk and so I thought I'd add something here. And, and I think, you know, we go back to history and I think history is a very important place as a reference point and we have a lot of bad blood on, on both sides. If we were to summarize this in the, in the most objective way, the residents are divided because the previous city council gave away office space without really defining precise standards. And the division is due to 2 million office space that's really put onto Valco. So removing office space at this moment really gives the city some opportunity to have negotiation power for a potential second step, should that occur, which is hopefully a more collaborative, better plan for Valco. Maybe we only build lots more housing. Maybe that's an opportunity, maybe we build a little bit of retail, right? But none of those opportunities are available to us today because we are in a SB 35 ministerial process. And we can't get to a compromise because nobody wants to look like the losing face and totally understand that, you know? It, it makes sense. But if all sides would agree to a ceasefire, let's, let's say a ceasefire for like three months, you know? That's fine, stop attacking each other or sending surrogates to attack each other for the next few months. I mean, we, we could get to a compromise, really, and, and get more housing built with a much lower ratio. And I think there's an opportunity for us to work with the developer. I think there's an opportunity for us to bring the residents together, but, but we need a ceasefire. Like I know there's a way to get to a ceasefire, but, but that's what I would extend to the, the developer to say, you know, let's stop attacking each other for three months and see what happens. Have a conversation, maybe be interesting. I mean, I, we're all here, I think most of this planning commission is here, realizes that a housing, housing is an issue, affordable housing's an important part, BMR housing's important, special needs housing's important. And there's a way to build this to a way that's Cupertino-like, right? So I, I think we should probably figure out a way to do that too. But, but we don't get that if we don't have any leverage and, and that's part of the problem right now. And so I think that's why this has been in front of us. But I think the opportunity is out there and, you know, I, I think we should start these conversations. I believe, Commissioner Saxina, is this the first time you met with Sand Hill today?
Well, when, when the referendum was being, was being discussed, I was traveling from Creekside to my home in Montevista and had dropped by the library. And at that time, I'd met some people who were, who didn't have a table, but who were at that point. And that really rattled me because, so that, I don't know if they were Sand Hill representatives or what they were.
Well, I'm trying to say, let's, let bygones be bygones and let's, let's get to a clean slate. I think that's a very, very important part. And I, I make that offer to the folks at Sand Hill to have a real conversation about affordable housing, how to build it. Maybe we can build it with no office, maybe we can build some office, let's get some real economic models. I think other developers have, you know, come to us and said it's possible to do it without less office. But, but I think, you know, it's important to have that conversation and extend that to them. So I'll leave that at there.
So I'll direct a question to staff. Under the current planning process, so one of the comments here was that the council gave away this space. But under the current planning process, in the ER, we establish an amount of potential growth in office space allocation for the next, you know, period of time. And it is the policy of the, the planning department that if an applicant wants to ask for whatever space is available, that you grant that for consideration. Of course, the council may choose to, to say no. Is that correct?
I think that's consistent.
Yeah. The amount of space that was added in the, the, the amount of office space that was added in the last GP was approximately 2 million square feet. The recommendation from the staff was to consider no more than 1 million square feet. Commissioner Takahashi can attest to that. But they were within their rights to ask for that. And, and of course, and, and I believe actually Councilman Sinks probably explicitly said, you know, and when you come back and try to get this project approved, we're going to say no. So nothing was given away. Though it's the policy, you know, you take, you can have the space to consider. And, and, and that's why there's never any hotel rooms, because every hotel that builds takes all the space that there is. You know, there, there were recommendations and ultimately there was a, you know, there was a, there was going to be a hearing to approve this, it just never got there, right? Nobody could have anticipated SB 35 would streamline a project like this. The council was trying to do things like, we don't want to establish heights. The recommended height at Valco was 85 feet, I think, in the, from the staff recommendation. They didn't want to, they figured there was enough, enough arguing going on already without trying to go with the height, to set heights and new setbacks in some of the special plan areas. So they said, well, we'll defer that and never got back to it, right? So I think that there's certainly, I think there's misrepresentation of what was happening here. And I, I know the Sand Hill guys are back there and, and, and I would also say, there are many developers, there are many developers in this area, when given 50 acres of land, would want to build a lot of houses and would complain if they had to build office. People mentioned Fort Bay earlier today. They actually are exactly that. Fort Bay is the project that's going to be built a little ways down Stevens Creek Boulevard. They build homes, they only want to build homes. They were, they were forced by San Jose to build an office building because San Jose doesn't have enough revenue. They don't have enough tax revenue because all people build our homes there. So there are certainly other developers who might be able to do, in a space like this, do something different. It's certainly possible. I hope, you know, that Sand Hill will consider that as well. The problem was that there was so much opposition from the community to building homes there that what you got was this very tiny, tiny allocation. There was already a battle, right? I think everybody, at the time of, in 2014, there was a lot of questions about, can we build 600? Can we build 800? And there was an enormous amount of pushback. Many people in this room saying, we, you know, we can't tolerate that, it's going to be too much impact on the schools. And the, and the council restricted that. When, when they restricted the number of, of housing units, that has the effect for this large parcel of land, you know, they were forced to consolidate and do this as a, as a master developer. That the, then you say, okay, well, what am I going to build then? Shopping center doesn't, shopping center doesn't work, I'll build office, right?
I mean, you mentioned about schools. Did, did the analysis about, like suppose we need to build a new school, suppose a new school, how much it would cost and where the, what would it be funded by?
And that's happening, that, that's actively, that discussion is actively happening both at Stanford and in Mountain View right now, right? You're the Los Altos School, Elementary School District, right? But they did that analysis here and, and the problem is we are over capacity. CUSD is over capacity.
See, I think that's where there's a disagreement, when we say, oh, one third of the classes are being held in trailers and then we say we are under capacity, are we seeing over, like?
Well.
We have a lot of conflicting stats is what I've noticed, but.
We do, we do.
Depending if I'm raising money or if I'm not, but it's kind of what's going on.
As a, as a longstanding, I just termed out of the CUSD bond oversight committee. You know, the decision about how we fund schools was a state decision, you know, it's Prop 13. The money comes only one way and there's never enough to do anything other than what they do. That will be, you know, is very difficult to make it, you know? I don't know how, I don't know how to make a change there because once again, this is a state rule that makes this, that's made this. Now, there have been offers, tens of millions of dollars in the Hills Plan, right?
Yeah, but we know that 10 million is.
Well, 20 million actually, right? It was $20 million in the, in the original Hills Plan, right? And so the cost, the cost, you know, so, you know, there's, the immediate question is what does five acres of land cost for a school if you're going to build a traditional school? You know, it's very high. The cost in Mountain View, the cost in Mountain View for the Los Altos School District, I believe, was something on the order of 80 million, right? And they were going to, and they are paying for that by selling development rights, but because they're developing at low density there, they're selling development rights elsewhere in the city, right? Not something that's really an option here, right? If you actually want the school built there. Now, if you want to have that discussion around, if you want to have the discussion, if you want it in the, in that spirit, have a discussion with the Valco owners that say, find a place where I can build a school, but give, you're going to have to give me $50 million worth of additional building capacity, I suspect that they probably would have that discussion.
Why would we, that's, that's the part which I don't understand, you know? If you look at developments, like Cupertino has one of the highest square footage per sale price of homes. So if I go like five miles south, five miles west, I can get something like 30% cheaper, okay? If we, if those communities can come up and get schools and everything done, why can't we?
Because, because, you know, in the case, in the case of the Mountain View one, you know, there's a Google Village that's, you know, five times the size of what's proposed at Valco. And they really want to build it and that's why there's, they're having a discussion about a school, right?
I think, I think those are the kind of discussions I want to have, that hey, if we want to do this, we want to get the, the developer wants to get the profits which come from being in Cupertino versus being like 10, 20, 30 miles away. It also puts costs on the city, it also put costs on the residents. How do we work out something where, you know, we don't socialize those costs and privatize those profits? And it, it eventually boils down to that. And we need to have some discussion on those. I think the way it was done in the past, I don't think those things were addressed. We were told, oh, school enrollment is falling, falling, so Valco will help. And when I look at the 20-year chart, it's like a curve which went up 40, 50% over since the 90s.
But that doesn't, it doesn't matter now because school is falling with an eight or $10 million deficit per year, right? So the, I think that the answer, the answer to that, part of that is, one of the principles of how, of how, how the planning works is that you look at the impacts that come from this proposed project and you figure out the ways for them to address those net, you know, the net impacts, right? So you know how many people are coming, you know how many people are coming. And the problem is, what you can't, I mean, you can ask, you can ask for money, you could apply to address the sins of the past. But if you want to make, if you want to make portables go away at the, at the existing schools, that's not, that's not a function of the new, you know, of the new, of the new project.
Yeah, but it got, I don't want to make it even worse.
You won't make it worse because there's, those, there is excess capacity there.
Okay, so if you say, if one third of the classes are in portables and they, they call that excess capacity, I think that's where we disagree. For me, it's 50% overcrowding because you are essentially operating at 50% higher rate than what you were supposed or you built out or like when.
No, no, that's, that's not correct.
When CUSD cut down on like 10 or dozen of those campuses in the late 70s and 80s and then when we started, the valley boomed and the people started moving in, the population grew, the school population went up like 40 or 50%, we didn't have a single new campus built.
Yes, okay, so.
And what we started doing was putting more and more portables, some of the portables in the schools are like 20 years old, right?
Incorrect, incorrect. Those are actually being replaced on a regular basis, on a regular basis, because it's part of the regular funding of how we do the.
No, but some of them are reaching the 20-year-old milestones, right? But then they get replaced because that's the only thing we can.
No, that's generally not true. Their, their rotation, so what's happening is, when, when the, when the, when the attendance in the school goes, so the, so the first part is, if you look at the beginning of that curve, that was at the time when Prop 13 was passed, which took away the funding for schools. So that, that immediately is one problem. Another problem that you see was, in the 1970s, schools would typically have 300 kids or 350 kids and the overhead, the fixed overhead of operating a small, of many, many small schools is too high, which is why they went to a model where schools typically, you know, went to a model where schools would have 600, right? By that time, by that time, by the 80s, there's no money anymore, right? Prop, Prop 13 passed in 1978. So by the time you get to 1985, there's no money for, for schools to build infrastructure anymore. And that, you know, but they did, they did add, you know, they did add portable classrooms and those portable classrooms are there, that is a way to meet capacity.
Yeah, okay. I think the, the summary of this is that we really need to study the impact of what, whatever we build will have, especially in schools, and we do want to have mitigation for that, is what I wanted to bring up.
Right, and, and I would just say that, that there's been deep study on what is the actual impact, you know? How many kids, the demographer says, how many kids are going to come out of, of this? Where would those kids go? That has been studied and I believe that that's been well addressed in the, in the DAs that were laid out before.
Yeah, I think that we have had some discussion on those, that there was some study done for either for SB 35 or for the other one, and then we said it's going to be the same. The demographer had said like .30 or something per unit as the school impact. And then we had some other numbers which are .2 and then we decided it's going to be half of that because of this. But yes, those are the kind of discussions we've had before. But we do, do need to address those and figure out what the impact is. And, you know, I mean, I didn't know we could build a school in five acres. Can we build a school in five acres, elementary schools?
I don't think there's a restriction.
Does anyone have a restriction?
It shouldn't be a restriction. It would be much smaller in an urban area.
Or you can build up too on the schools.
Okay. Yes, but, but around here, the schools are five acres.
Okay, so that's interesting. So if we have a 60-acre lot, we could actually build a school in five acres and still leave like 90% of the school.
You could build a school, you could build a Costco, you could build a convention center.
Fifty million, fifty million bucks worth of land. You just have to decide if that's the best piece of land.
Yeah, okay, cool. Anyway, I think that's where some of the concerns which I had, which I wanted to share with the community here. And, and I think my point all along about what we're talking about here. And, and I think my point all along about what we're talking about here is to get people to tango. And if that's not happening, the city will have, I mean, I would be supportive of doing things which will force people to do that.
I, I just want to make a point here. I mean, I've looked at a lot of developer agreements over the last six months just to see like what cities are doing and, and how they're negotiating for rights. I mean, I would say to some extent, we asked for a lot of crazy crap in there and I was like, you gotta be kidding me, we're asking for this. On the other hand, we gave a lot of our developer rights out for free. It was a pretty bad DA. I mean, like, like, I really felt people were asleep at the negotiation table when that happened. But that being said, I mean, I think, you know, short of, short of an extension where someone says, hey, look, let's, let's take a look at this and be collaborative. I mean, right now, what's before us is a resolution that says, let's have a little bit of leverage in a conversation that goes forward. But I would preface that, you know, it's important. I think I agree with Commissioner Takahashi, we need a collaborative approach if we're going to break this impasse. I would impart on the developer that this planning commission is open to having that conversation and relaying that to the city council. I think that's an important step, but I also want to implore that, you know, we, we have to do something here to be able to get some leverage to get to that conversation, unless we have, we have nothing, we have nothing on the back end. And I hope you respect that because that's, you know, that may be how some people vote. On the other hand, these are tough decisions, so, and I think it was very important for everybody here in the community. I wish we had viewership numbers so we actually knew how many people were watching this thing, right? Not everyone get out here, but, but I think there's a lot of conversations, a lot of emails written, a lot of input that, you know, that was very useful. So, I'll leave with that.
And you know, I'll just comment one thing. I went through all the input and so many of, some of them were opposing the resolution, some of them were supporting the resolution. I don't think a single one mentioned office space, that we need the office space. Even people who were vehemently opposing and saying, hey, why are you stopping Valco while that is happening? So I think that should send a message to all of us and even the developers and the people who support it, that none of the, the community people who are writing up, not a single one, I don't, and I might be wrong, there might be somebody who read that it needs to be viable, but I don't think anybody said we need office space there. So, that's something which, and I'm sure all of you got it, and Commissioner Fang, Commissioner Takahashi, none of them really said, we really wanted office space there. So that's something which has been true across the board.
Yeah, I was going to add something. I mean, someone asked, we have a vision for this place and, and I didn't know planning commissioners were allowed to provide vision and talk about the great things we were doing because projects might show up, you know, so, but, I mean, look, you know, this is Cupertino. We are in the middle of a high-tech hub. We are, we have an opportunity to showcase something awesome, something brilliant in the space, right? Whether it's a smart city, whether it's something that shows you can build a livable city, if we're something that is massively eco-friendly, we have a lot of values here. And I think we can get there, right? But, you know, once again, right now, we're at a point where the city has no leverage. The city has no opportunities because we haven't had the right conversations and I think that's where we are with this resolution.
Ready for a vote?
I, I don't know.
Are we scared to vote here?
For the record, I probably have some other stuff.
Do you want to take it in each resolution as we, as we make a motion and then...
I had comments on one of the resolutions and let me look at what else.
If you'd like, I can lay out a few options for how to proceed unless you...
I think that would be great. Give us some options. Give us some legally viable options here.
Commissioner Fang, do you want to make a few more comments before?
Yeah, I did, I did. So, so one of the things I'm concerned about is that, at the core of this, at the core of having a good discussion is, is financial viability, you I was, we were fortunate, somebody mentioned Tier 1.5, which was a recommendation from the previous Planning Commission on, on an alternative to the other proposals that were put forth. Tier 1.5, they, the goal of Tier 1.5, it really does say, hey, there are people out there, there are, there are projects out there to develop today where they would like to build lots and lots and lots of homes. You know, there's often restriction on the ability to do that. In, in this particular case, one of the challenges has been that the, the things that the council asked for, the concessions that the council asked for, included some very, very expensive things that require some of the profit center to make those things happen. So, you know, again, I would just, I would just say if there's an opportunity where, where the council has to ask for less, that includes sometimes asking for less in terms of what you perceive as infrastructure, that that becomes the way to have the discussion around how to have less office. If you focus on, you know, if the benefit of the, of a proposal, of the mix of proposal is not having office, I think we probably can all do with, well with that. You know, that said, I will say, you know, public, I think the public spoke pretty loudly tonight in chambers. We had people speaking two to one opposed to the, to these, this proposal. I believe it was 12 to one is what I saw, 12 or 14 to one in what I got in emails from the, so it's a very, it was a very strong, strong comment in opposition. I guess I, I do want to come back, kind of in the, in the light of the discussion around viability. One of the challenges is that there isn't anything that prevents us from having very expensive mitigations that address issue, you know, address impact that isn't there anymore in this proposal, right? So, so for instance, the traffic mitig, you know, the traffic mitigations that are called for by the 2014 EIR address much, much more construction in, in, you know, those 2 million square feet more of office net across the city or at Valco. So one of the things, then again, I would say strongly, you know, that you strongly want to come back and look at whether, at, if you're going to change the scale of mitigate, the scale of impact, that you want to adjust the mitigations so that they don't become financially, they don't become the thing that makes a project financially unviable. The, in the, one of the, one of the actions taken as part of the general plan traffic mitigations were the, to enact a traffic impact fee, right? And that traffic impact fee has a nexus study that looks at, you know, at, you know, the different impact, you know, the different size of Valco, you know, the different size of Valco development. If you're taking away 2 million square feet net across the city, then that nexus fee is now way too high or, you know, of course, some will argue, it's not high enough yet. But some, you know, it is way too high relative to the standard in which we did this. So I think that, that's something that really needs to be considered, you know, in terms of, in terms of making this a reasonable, making this a reasonable resolution. And I think, and then the other thing, I think I'm, I would also, you know, one part of a general plan amendment that is not part of the EIR is a fiscal analysis. So there's a pretty serious fiscal impact that's not been talked about. It was not addressed in the staff report or in the, in the ER that I know of. There is a significant fiscal impact from the lack of the reduction in, in office space. I think that would be on the order, well, I don't know, if you, if you look back at the Valco-specific plan, there's financial analysis done, but I think, well, I think that Sand Hill provided, provided a couple where you were seeing something on the order, this, this project would have generated something on the order, the, the SB 35 generates something on the order of $7 million a year to the city in revenues. Now, with, you know, with greatly reduced, with no office and greatly reduced residential, I mean, you're looking at losing most of that. So there is a financial impact to the city as well. You know, again, maybe that's just something they want to do. I would strongly encourage that the council stand, you know, take the time to do an analysis and understand those, those numbers. Those numbers directly affect the schools as well. There's something like, I think it was probably three or four million dollars to FUHSD. FUHSD is basic aid. They get additional revenue directly in proportion to the property tax paid. So, you know, it costs them millions of dollars per year.
I, I want to ask a procedural question to our team here. We can make a recommendation with two opposing views. Is that correct?
So, under state law and the municipal code, you're required to pass any general plan amendment or zoning ordinance change by a majority of the full body. So, you'd have to pass by, with a vote of three. If you are unable to do that tonight, you still, under state law, have to make a written recommendation to the council. So your recommendation could be, for instance, that you recommend that the council consider the, the resolutions and zoning changes in addition to the, the record of the commission hearing and the public comments and make its determination.
Okay.
And just so you know, we've actually, in anticipation of a possible split vote, we've drafted an alternate set of resolutions that take that approach.
It's like printing Super Bowl T-shirts for both teams?
Yeah.
Not knowing who's going to win? All right, good to know. All right, well, good job there. Sorry, got a little humor in here.
We also had a, we also had an effort which was to recommend a location for the...
Correct. They're four resolutions here.
It's one of the general plan resolutions.
You can get to that point, we get a fourth resolution.
I, I, I just want to make a, a clear point. I believe when Sand Hill purchased the property, it was about four to five million an acre at that point. Today, the property value is probably between 10 to 12 million an acre, but the, the buying costs, I mean, give them some room, hopefully. So it's, it's something to point out there. So we can figure out what economically viable might be, once we have better facts. And then...
Yeah, actually, that's something which I would actually like to get more information about, the actual spreadsheets, number, methodology used for evaluating economic viability of these projects.
Yes, and if you, if you were to do that, then you would, you would ask that financial analyst to look at what the difference is between developing 2,900 units of residential versus 300 or, you know, 389. That has a big effect on the value of that land.
Yeah, I think we're already talking 600, so it's not 389, but anyway.
No, no, I mean...
No, those are valid points, from both of you.
If you, if this land had, if you have, if you have 37 acres of land on which you can only build a shopping center, that doesn't have a lot of value. That's not 12 million dollars an acre of land, only to somebody who's going to build an office there later.
Well, it doesn't mean you have to do all that in that sequence, but I also want to, I want to make a point here. I mean, that, look, these resolutions are keeping the same number of units allocated in 2015. I mean, the site was zoned for regional shopping, so not all 50 acres are meant for housing, even in 2015. Now this GPA is just clarifying the zoning to assert the original intent of the 2015 GPA. This is not downzoning. So I just want to make that clear, so. Okay, can we get to one of the resolutions and maybe get to a vote and have a discussion on that? Is that okay? So, is there a proposal anyway to...
I have to ask Commissioner Takahashi, that if you were to, what would the, the amount of office space, the minimum amount you would be comfortable with if you have to support this?
Closer, sorry.
Yeah. The, the minimum amount, I think what we discussed prior planning commission meetings was, at a maximum, half of what was eventually decided upon.
So 1 million?
Was 1 million.
That was the max.
Yeah.
And what was the min?
We didn't really talk about a minimum. We assumed the maximum would be what would be developed.
You actually have...
Thank you.
You have a very strong hint at what the min would be if you look at Tier 1. Because, you know, I don't know, people don't seem to recognize that a lot of the things that came forward in the balance plan, which was what was adopted, a lot of those things actually turned out to be the, very close to the Tier 1 allocations. It's just, there was never any consideration of, of treating it as 35 units per acre across the entire, I think, across the entire space, but other than that, the kind of heights they're talking about, the kind of massing, the kind of mix, those things are all very similar.
Yeah.
And that would, in Tier 1, the office, the office, projected office allocation was 500,000, or that was max.
Okay.
I, I, from my standpoint, I don't think there should, I don't think there should be a min office. I believe there really are, you know, if you go to, you know, if you go to Mountain View, there are a bunch of, there are a bunch of people who are just, they're building a lot of homes. They would build no, they would build no coffee shop if you, if you gave them a chance. So there's, there's a model that makes it...
I need my EB5, huh, you know, Boba places.
There's a, there's a model, there's a model, there's a model of financial viability there. And so, you know, tending more toward that kind of a model.
Yeah, I think the big challenge with Cupertino is that we don't get mass transit, okay? And that's like, so when we look at the cities near 101, which get Caltrain, which get Dialtrain, they have a different situation, we have a different situation. And we have to keep that in account when we think of things.
It's true, but, it's true, but Mountain View just passed the largest, approved the largest housing development they've ever approved there.
That's the Google...
No, no, it's, it's actually, it's a different one. It's actually a different project by Forbes, if I know correctly, and it's not on transit.
Forbes, it's not on mass transit. It's not on transit-based housing.
It's not, it's not, it's not a transit project.
I was talking about offices, so, anyway.
Okay, just for clarification, the first resolution here, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Cupertino recommending that the city council adopt MCA 201901 in ordinance, eliminating references in the municipal code to the Valco Town Center-specific plan and adding language establishing development standards for a new mixed-use plan development with multifamily R through residential and general commercial zoning designation. That's the first resolution, correct?
The first resolution's actually the GPA 201901 with the second addendum.
With the second addendum, okay. Let's go to that. Let's see what we're looking at Is this the general plan in heights?
So it would be the recommendation that the city council adopt or consider GPA 201901, which would adopt the second addendum and amend the general plan to remove offices of permitted use from the Valco shopping district and remove the associated office allocations.
Okay. Is there a motion for that resolution?
I sup, I propose a motion to vote for that.
Okay, is there a second? I'll provide the second. Okay, let's deliberate.
Well, so, so I, although I understand, and we've had, we had discussion here about the, the second amendment to the EIR, I don't, you know, I think that there, I think that it is worthy of further study and that's one of the reasons why I'm going to not vote for this. I also think that the, the intention to go for the minimal housing to maintain, to maintain the housing element compliance is, is not a, not a good objective for the city.
Okay.
Well, I would say that, that's just, what, like one-fifth of the site or something like that, right? So, it at least sets the lowest bar of what we want, what could there, so.
Okay.
So, that's my view, Commissioner Fang.
This, this resolution affects all 50 acres? It takes away the ability to have housing on 35, or 37?
It doesn't take away ability of housing. That can come back at another time. You're making it sound like it's absolute, like there will never be housing there again, I mean.
What you're voting on here today makes it impossible to build housing on 37 acres?
Without another motion.
Without another complete general plan amendment.
What we're doing here is restoring it to where it was originally in 2015.
Let's vote.
No, in 2015, in 2015, there was an approval, there was, you know, there was an approval that had office space there. And with all due respect to, to staff, I mean, we were, we were having a discussion about that in the break, about whether that, that was a possibility before. You know, there was a time when 19800 was part of Valco and there was a time when 19800 was intended to be professional offices. So this is not, you're making something new. It's something that was in Measure C maybe, and that was defeated, you know, strongly defeated.
2 million was there?
No, the ability to have, the ability to have office.
Not specified.
Yes.
Well, we also made that mistake of not specifying.
Yeah, I think a lot of mistakes were made.
A lot of mistakes were made here.
Look, and, and once again, though, the whole thing about those, the thing about the, the allocations, the provisional allocations, where they were made with the expectation that there was going to be a approval process for a, a project that would come forward. You know, the, the whole point, this was in following the normal planning process here, which personally I find to be crazy, but, you know, it was following that process with strong, strong advice from planning, you know, from the planning staff, don't, don't try to do this, with strong, you know, I think there were strong words from the council members as well, that they were very unlikely to do this unless it was really a very impressive solution, right? And that's, that's why you allocate, why you allow somebody to run away with all the space. They believe that they, they believe they'll impress you and, and that you'll want to, you know, that you'll want to vote for it.
I don't know, man, when I do the economics, simple math on a napkin... I don't know, man, when I do the economics, simple math on a napkin, like 5 million an acre, basically what was paid for, put eight homes on 5 million, on an acre each, charge 2 million a home, maybe two split homes, maybe do some mixed use, maybe some two townhouses, I mean, you're making 16 million on each acre, right? I mean, that's like, that's like $11 million profit. Okay, let's take some out for like lobbyists, whatever else. I mean, you're on $8 million profit per acre. I mean, I, I don't know, back-of-the-envelope calculation, I probably need to sit down with Sando and do some more economics, but...
I think somebody mentioned 6 billion, right?
I mean, when people tell me it's not economically viable, I really do have to look at the sheets, but right now...
Yeah, but now you're talking about $2 million houses.
No, he's talking about $5 million houses.
No, 2 million, 2 million, 8 per acre.
If you haven't heard a word that any of our speakers have talked about is the value of affordable housing.
Oh, no, but I was just giving a single-family housing example. Now, put mixed units in, right? Put townhomes in, put an apartment in. I mean, you can make these numbers work, is what I'm trying to say.
The whole point is that, yes, the numbers can work, even with the single-family homes, the least desirable...
Right, so why, why, why isn't that on the table, then? Why aren't we talking about all residential?
We could, I'd like to.
Well, that's not what's here.
Well, no, that's not what's here, but we can't hear it, and you should not vote for this.
Oh, no, no, but the reason, but the reason, we will vote, but the reason we're talking about this is because we can't get the developer back to the table. That's the issue. That's why we're putting this resolution out here. That's why we're having this debate, but let's vote. You guys ready to vote?
Just some procedural. You talked about, in the event of a 2-2 split, there's...
Two Super Bowl T-shirts.
Right, exactly. It's gonna go to the council, and they're gonna do what they want to do, right? I mean...
Yeah, I mean, our right is not...
I mean, reality, right?
Yeah, I didn't want to stop you all.
And we just thought we were so powerful here on the planning commission. That's awesome.
So, let's just...
We're just an advisory commission.
So none of this debate was useful?
Well, it's useful, it's public record, and it's gaining public input, it's a public meeting, so that is there. That was the value of what we're doing and why we did it. But, having said that, you know, let's not, we're trying to figure out how to reach a consensus and/or 3-1, I think is going to take a lot longer than anybody here really wants to go through.
I've got all night, right? I've got, I'm on like...
I think Allen has made it clear, that's, let's do what we want to do, take the vote, and...
I've got a hall pass for the night, guys, I'm in. What do you got, like a 2:00 AM joint?
Did you want to discuss alternative?
Well, I think, one thing, I would say at least getting some views...
Let's get some procedural guidance here.
There has been, a motion has been made and seconded, so we should close out that motion.
We will close out on the first vote, but if, I urge the planning commissioners here, if there's anything we get to a 3-1, that would be wonderful. If not, we're gonna do the split thing with a recommendation, and city council, as you know, in the process will make their own deliberations based on our recommendation. So, sorry, guys, we're not that powerful.
Yeah, agreed.
All right, let's go, let's start the vote, here we go. Everybody vote, here we go.
Kitties.
And we have an abstention.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a split vote. If any people were betting in Las Vegas, this is what you would have gotten, 2-2-0. So thank you, everybody, let's get into the next resolution. What do we have, staff, from the next resolution?
So this one is GPA 201902, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Cupertino recommending that the city council adopt GPA 201902, a resolution amending the general plan and general plan land use map to establish height limits and enact development standards for residential uses within the Valco Shopping District Special Area and identifying a recommended location for future residential development on 13.1 acres of the special area.
So do we have to identify a location for the...
Yeah, can we strike that last part? And identifying a recommendation for a future residential development, 13.1? Maybe we might get some more support if we do that?
You can make a motion.
Before we do that, let's talk about that.
Let's talk about that. Yeah, so, the concept of these resolutions not being consistent kind of wasn't something that I was thinking about, but, you know, what's here, it is that last element of recommendation of the location of the future residential development, and then that specifying the 13.1 acres, to me, is something that would, if stricken, would start to consider potentially supporting this. I need to understand a little more, and I think I need to read the full resolution that we have online here. Sorry.
Hey, this is open government, you get to hear what we think out loud.
So there are a couple, there are a couple detailed points on here that I just wanted to...
That would be appreciated.
Raise, raise on page six, which would be the first amended text, there's, there's a bunch of existing text which was carried over, and I don't know whether it's appropriate or not. That's the part that we'd read. In recent years, there's been some facade improvements to the Valco Fashion Mall, however, there's been no major reinvestment in the mall for decades. I don't know whether we want to keep that.
I was really, I mean, when I first joined, right, I was like reading the planning documents, the general plan amendments, all the land use things, and the funny thing was, I kept asking, "But what are the height limits here?" And it's the only area that didn't have height limits. Oh, wait, we lost that screen, but, oh, I'm on. But the point being is, it's the only area that we had, didn't have height limits, and I thought that was kind of funny, that we weren't consistent across. And still today, when you look at the plan, I mean, we looked at it a few days ago, when we look at objective standards a few meetings ago, there were no height limits, which was really strange to me. So I'm not sure what the history was, if anybody knows.
The height limits have only not been present since, since 2014, since the passage of the new general plan, and that was part of the provisional allocations. Prior to that, I believe the height limit was something like, I think it's 75. Although, interestingly, I'm not sure that, there may have been, there may have been, again, the staff may know this, I think there may have been an exemption, because I'm told that the, when the theaters were built, they were actually taller than...
They were taller than 75.
Yeah, I didn't want to go to the exception.
I mean, if you want big-screen IMAX theaters, it's gonna be a little taller.
So there had always been heights in the past.
Well, would you be open to supporting some height limits there, at least?
I don't have a problem with height limit, so I think that it's an oversight that there was no height limit set. I don't know, this one, this one, I believe, was 60 feet.
65, I believe, and 75.
75 with...
West side, east side were different, I believe, right?
Well, not in this, there's no location, and this one, the residential, the mixed-use residential parcel or areas would have 75-foot height with retail, 60-foot height otherwise. So I think that's probably insufficient to be viable again. Now, we have a particular problem, because before, you could, you could achieve the setback because it's a small part of a, of a large, you know, by careful placement on the site. But by restricting this, you're actually causing quite a bit of, you know, you're having a one-to-one slope on a restricted portion with a restricted height. So I think that, you know, you're kind of, you're kind of building a pyramid.
Are the great pyramids of Cupertino will show up?
Well, so that's one of, and again, one of the interesting questions was whether there was a viable, financially viable mixture of residential housing that could be built in a, assuming contiguous 13.1 acre site with these restrictions.
But let's say we get rid of that last sentence there, how does, how do you feel about that?
This, the idea here was that this was going to create a by-right ability to build housing, so that means, that means it doesn't come here, it doesn't go anywhere, right? So you really need to make that decision, I think. And I think it's, you know, that's exactly a decision that's going to make people very angry, because it's going to be, you know, well, I mean, you know, I think I alluded to this before, when you take a look at the way the Valco site lays out, one of the things, one of the things that we've heard endlessly here at the commission, they've heard it at the council, has been, wow, we're really concerned about toxic contamination at these locations. If you exclude the Sears site and the Penny's site, that leaves only one place where you're gonna put the 13-acre site, and that's right next to the houses that are in the Portal neighborhood. So...
It's the parking lot. Pretty much.
There's, there's...
Well, the parking deck, yeah, that's what we're talking about.
No, I think it's, I think you're talking about the Macy's location is about the only place.
Parking to Macy's, yeah. From the edge of parking to Macy's is probably the location of 13.1 acres, from what I look at.
Well, I mean, you know, there was a, there was a map, there was a map that was provided that had...
Those cool maps, thank you.
That had the approximate size of overlay, right? But that, that means that this area would be abutting the residential area, probably not the most desirable place to have it. And I suspect that, you know, one of the things that was of, an area of great effort in the specific plan was that they had a 45-foot limit with a much larger setback. And that's something that this wouldn't allow, I mean, you know...
Along that, along the...
It doesn't prescribe, I mean, if you have a specific plan, you can still negotiate that, you're at least putting something with nothing.
We're basically saying, at least get some height limits there. I mean, that's what this thing reads. Is that, do you guys read this anything different from the staff? Like, we don't have height limits, let's get height limits there. It's the only place on the, it's the only place on the general plan that has no height limits.
Building, the problem is that it includes, includes a slope limitation as well.
That's much less than what it used to be.
It was 1 to 1 versus 1 to 1.5.
And it's 1 to 1 now. So like, I mean, come on.
That's right, that's right, but you're taking, you're talking about 13 acres of the 50, right?
No, no, I'm talking about getting rid of that last sentence, that last and.
Right, right, if we could strike the 13 acres.
Let's just make sure what we are talking about.
Yeah, that's what I'm worried about.
Okay, so, are you proposing, are you proposing 75-foot high, 75-foot with...
I'm not even proposing a height limit specifically here, right?
Because, because if, I mean, you know, that's a...
I'm saying we need a height limit, right? I mean, you know, I mean...
Well, what would you propose as a height limit, then?
What I'm proposing...
You're talking about proposing it across the 50 acres.
What I'm proposing at this point is, is removing that last part to make a motion for a resolution of the planning commission, dah dah dah, up to residential uses within the Valco Shopping District Special Area.
Period.
Period. And ripping that and part off, right? And not saying, and we will figure out what the height limit is.
So, this is the, what you just wrote again, is the title of the resolution? The resolution itself does include specific text, I mean, Commissioner Feng summarized it briefly, but it did have specific height limits based on different uses that would be allocated. So if you want to provide direction around what, what that text should be, or what those standards should be, it would be appropriate to incorporate that into your motion as well. But the, it's more than just the, what's shown on the title, there's, there are significant development standards and policy language that are attached to this as well.
And that's in Exhibit A?
That's correct.
All right, let's give everybody some time to review Exhibit A. Actually, for the purposes of the public, can we put up Exhibit A as well, just so people know what we're looking at? That might be easier that way. Yeah, it is multiple pages.
Multiple pages.
Sorry about that. I had a technical question on this one as well. The amendment to LU 19.2.1 said, included, I'm not even gonna complain about private streets, must be open to the sky, but I will say that connections between buildings are permitted at levels above the third floor for public-serving uses, that does not refer to the, if there were to be a bridge over Wolf Road, does it? I mean, this, are you talking about bridges between buildings here?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I think that that's, you know, the, the current, the current cross between East and West Wolf is not greater than three floors high, so I think you just, we just need to be careful about that. I believe that precludes, that would preclude a bridge in the form that it exists today. And then, just, again, just as another thing that just popped out at me on the next point, LU 19.2.2, there was a addition of, you know, there was a replacement of, Rose Bowl was replaced by 19800, that's fine, Main Street and the surrounding areas. I'm not sure what that was intended to be. Again, right now, one of the things that was a great area of friction during the entire set of proposals was there's a existing wall right now next to perimeter road that separates the Portal Neighborhood from Valco. This sounds like it actually was, the wall does exist elsewhere in this document, but this actually sounds, and surrounding areas, it sounds like you're actually creating access there. So I'm not sure what that was intended to address, but I think that that probably shouldn't be there.
Commissioner Takashi, a chance to find what you needed to find, or staff, maybe there's a way we can summarize those limits? Just to emphasize my point, I imagine we put $400,000 condos on 35 DU, that's 12, 14 million per acre versus the 5 million they purchased, so, just so...
Yeah, in terms of resolution number two, it, I'm not comfortable yet, given there's, there's still references to the 13.1 acres in various places, and going through that and editing it appropriately, I think there's some risk in missing things and creating further confusion, so...
It needs to, it needs to get the draft and some public hearings.
Right.
All right. So, question to staff, if we're to remove 13.1 acres and to remove that, that language throughout the resolution, as well as what's in the exhibits, is that something that can be done before a council meeting? As a suggestion?
So would that be a recommendation to allow housing on the entire site, not on, not limited to 13.1 acres?
No, it's more about the fact that we're choosing the location for the 13.1 acres was more my issue, so...
I don't, I'm not sure, I'm sorry, I don't understand then what the, what the motion would be.
Haven't made the motion yet, I'm just trying to figure out how hard it is if we were to remove the reference to anything about where that location should be.
But then what would the recommendation be? I'm sorry, I'm just sorry, I'm not following.
There's, there's a problem. An additional problem is that this also includes a minimum density of 29 units per acre, so you can't just say it applies over the 50 unless you want, unless you want to have 3,000 units in total.
Okay.
We'll have to try.
Yeah, try, I can't say I'm not a compromising guy here, I was trying to get there somewhere. All right, well, is there a motion for this resolution?
Yes, I propose this resolution.
Okay, I will second the resolution. Any more deliberation?
I think we've done enough.
I think I'm the only one with a hall pass, so I can keep going. All right, we'll start the vote. Everyone there? Okay. Motion passes, doesn't pass, motion is tied at 2-2-0 for one abstention.
Motion fails, 2 to 2.
All right, what's our next one here?
We're gonna squeak one out. Three.
So, the next two items are, resolutions are zoning amendments. Now, the purpose of these is primarily to implement the general plan amendments, and so there's likely no purpose in proceeding, and in fact, there runs a risk of making it non-conformity, so you may instead want to consider this alternative option that we've proposed.
All right, let's take a look, what do you have?
Great, okay, so, do you want to add anything further on that? So I'll just begin with the plan amendment.
So, I'll just begin with the plan amendment, GPA dash twenty-nineteen dash zero-one, and I'll point out in reading the resolution language, title rather, what the changed language is. So, this one will be a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Cupertino recommending that the city council consider, whereas it was formerly adopt, GPA twenty-nineteen oh-one, a resolution adopting a second addendum to the twenty-fourteen General Plan Amendment Housing Element Update and Associated Rezoning Project Envir-, I'm sorry, Associated Rezoning Project Environmental Impact Report and amending the general plan to remove office as a permitted use from the Valco Shopping District Special Area and remove associated office allocations. Now, the, the resolution itself has been edited and I, and I do have an additional copy I can hand to the chair and you can pass amongst yourselves to say, now therefore be it resolved, the Planning Commission recommends that the city council consider the second addendum to the twenty-fourteen General Plan Amendment Housing Element Update and Associate Rezoning Project Environmental Impact Report and proposed general plan amendment in the draft resolution attached here to as Exhibit A, this is new language here, along with comments made by individual planning commissioners, staff and the public at the Planning Commission hearing on this item and act as it sees fit in the best interest of the city. Yeah, I'll just pass all four from down to you.
Oh yeah, that's good, that way the public can see that.
And just for transparency's sake, the second page that you see on the screen following this one is unchanged.
Okay, yeah, it's just signatures as well.
I thought it was me losing my eyesight.
Go Elmo. Has everybody had time to read this?
Yeah, we just need to interpret it.
Ask away.
So, the key elements are changing the word adopt to consider, obviously, and then consider the proposed municipal code amendments in the draft ordinance attached hereto as Exhibit A. So, again, reiterating that it's consider, but then adding our comments made by individual planning commissioners, staff and the public at the planning commission hearing on this item and act as it sees fit. So, my interpretation of that is that we've, we've had several different discussions and opinions that the city council should, in addition to the draft ordinance, weigh those comments as well and act as they see fit. Is that how everybody else sees it?
Yeah, I read it as, I read it as that we don't all agree, but look, consider all the opinions and take action as you need to.
Yeah.
That's how you read it, right?
Yeah, that's how I read it.
That's how I read that too.
Yes, but I would ask, then what does it mean if this does not pass? Are we, what are we telling, what are you telling the council? That we met and that's it?
We met, we had a good time, we got to eleven-thirty and.
I guess the point is that there was no agreement with the voting members to.
No, but it's really important to consider the public input as well and our input, this is the serious portion.
Yeah, that's a big part of why we're here. That's the main reason why we're here.
Okay, let me, let me take another look at the state code on this issue and see if we can carve a path forward.
All right.
At the end of the day, the council can always, you know, even if we had passed, adopted a resolution, the council could always take whatever they want away from that.
Right.
But, you know. I, I have, you know, I was counting the, I was counting the speakers today, I was counting the email that was coming in. You know, we have an overwhelmingly, overwhelmingly opposed.
What time did you check the emails?
I was checking it, my watch keeps, keeps bringing them in. I don't know, I was getting.
Look, I, I value public input and I also respect when there's a really great coordinated PR campaign on both sides. I, both happen, I don't look at the volume, I look at the quality and, you know, that's what I'll just leave that as, you know. A lot of great comments from wonderful people, a lot of comments from residents, a lot of comments from a lot of non-residents as well, so, you know, I, you know, take it as it is. I won't say the volume of, or who's here really determines like a popular vote here. I mean, sample size was pretty bad.
So, and I would actually say that that is reflective of the other concerns we raised around insufficient notification, rush process.
Or maybe the fact that they all know that they're just making a recommendation and ultimately this resolution is true.
Yep, consider it.
I'll wait for advice from our council.
I believe since this is part of the public record that they have the right to consider what was discussed. They always have the right to act in the best interest of the city, so I don't think we need to pass this.
Oh, we can pass it because you believe in it.
No, I don't believe in it.
Oh, okay, all right.
And at, at the end of the day, then, the, the Planning Commission just needs to ultimately make, make a recommendation for council to, to consider. So, if it's, if it's not this, if it's potential to wordsmith or find something that, that feels comfortable to at least three members to agree on a written recommendation that, that council can then consider when they're having their deliberations.
Just for the purpose of this discussion, that I would, I would, I believe that a reasonable recommendation would be that the, there needs to be more public process, you know, a more robust public process and some additional time before an action is taken on this topic.
I would counter with a comment that this council was elected to address some of the wrongs that occurred in past councils and that, you know, I mean, we've, we've met the legal standards that are required. I don't disagree, it's always good to have more input, but, but I think at a legal standard level, we've, we've met the legal standard. I believe that the staff has worked really hard to make sure that, you know, they're following the right legal patterns and, you know, it's, you know, I'm never going to disagree with more input, but I'm just telling you.
This council, the council in particular has put a lot of, has put a lot of words behind wanting to have more public process and have it be more transparent, and they have failed completely on this, on this effort. So, you know, I would say that the Planning Commission ought to make a recommendation that they have an opportunity to live up to what they said, and they should do that. And that means take more time.
I think the reason we are facing an issue regarding time and timelines is the fact that, you know, we, there could be a possibility, slight, big, large, I don't know who's, who's betting, but there's a slight possibility that an SB thirty-five lawsuit may fail. And, and as a planning commission, we should be prepared and be ahead of that issue. And if you look at the timelines and the timeline conversions, I think that's an important factor. That's why we, we have to meet the legal requirements and.
When you say that lawsuit will fail.
I said the lawsuit has a potential. Should the lawsuit fail, we are caught flat-footed with nothing in the general plan amendment. We're caught flat-footed without height limits, we're caught flat-footed with nothing.
Well, if the lawsuit fails, doesn't the SB thirty-five project move forward?
Oh, I mean, sorry, if the lawsuit succeeds, sorry, yeah, sorry, I confused you there. Should the lawsuits succeed and the developer fail to continue with that SB thirty-five project, we have nothing. We, as a planning commission, for like the last, no, no offense to you guys, I mean, we, we have a lot of cleanup to do. We've been spending a lot of time on cleanup to get objective standards in place and we have a huge hole here. And, and we have a obligation as planners to think ahead. So, should that minute possibility occur or major possibility occur, we should be ready.
But you shouldn't, but you should be ready with something that's carefully thought out and prepared, not something that you rushed to.
So, you're telling me that staff didn't do their work and wasn't actively working to prepare this and to do the research behind it? Are you saying that staff has not.
The staff was acting on behalf of the requests of the city council.
Yes, I think that the, the accelerated schedule was the request of the city council as well as some of the, some of the structural things that were asked for here. You know, I think that there was a lot of latitude under the specific plan process to try to come up with, you know, for the staff to come up with, you know, they're, to got a process that was, that was robust. You know, this is a very different thing, trying to partition out this, this one little, this one little section.
But the specific plan process has failed, so we're left with nothing right now.
Can't support this as, as written.
So, what would you like to modify?
I think the points that, that keep coming back with regard to what's proposed are the fact that we don't appear to have, A, the noticing and therefore true feedback from a greater percentage of, of the community as to support or lack of support of this is, is a fundamental issue that, that I'm having as well as, again, it seems pretty clear that, you know, it's a city council that's moving forward and trying to adopt something quickly similar to the prior city council, which they threw a lot of mud at and ran against from using that as the key platform. So, that hypocrisy is not unnoticed by myself.
But you don't, you don't give any credence to the fact that there is a, a reason why this is coming so that you could actually have a dialogue initiated? You don't think that's important at all?
Correct.
Okay, so, so in some way you're saying.
Again, again, the city, the city council.
Even though the, the previous councils, the previous planning commission put the city in a spot where you could have like, what, twenty-two very high buildings? Under SB thirty-five, you sort of absolve yourself and the previous city council of all responsibility to respond to what the citizens put down very clearly by defeating an incumbent city council, which rarely happens a former mayor, because they spoke loud and clear on that. They also spoke loud and clear on the referendum and you believe that, and we've also.
I believe, I believe that the input that came from the community tonight was not as one-sided as, as you're portraying. And that we need to seek a balance of, of what does the community really want? There is a very vocal group that, that really, I believe, tends to dominate the discussions. And, and how do we, how do we gain balance back from the standpoint of, of inputs?
So, you believe that a group which goes and finds, digs dirt on Commissioner Wong, tells them he should resign and everything is not vocal.
Did I say that, did I say that?
Well, you said there's a very vocal group and so on, so you.
Let me jump in here. Everybody on each side believes the other side has a small minority vocal group that's too loud. It doesn't matter which team I talk to, right? So, let's, let's agree on that, let's agree on that, okay? And let's also agree that, you know, it's a ground game. Whoever's got the best operations that day gets people in there. Like today, I was watching massive coordination of different groups here. I'm like, I'm not blind, I can watch, right, you know? So, okay, let's take that out of that, right? I mean, my point is, we're walking into a situation, should, should a certain lawsuit fail or succeed, let me get it correct, like, if, if the lawsuit succeeds for, if the lawsuit fails for the developer, we still have nothing there. I agree with you, it may be rushed, okay? But we have met the legal standard, okay? And I agree with you that we could have more hours of community input, but imagine if the lawsuit failed and the next day they've submitted something and we have nothing in the general plan. We are, we have nothing, right? We have nothing, we have no leverage, we can't even negotiate, we can't even have a conversation. I mean, that's, that's crazy.
Right, so, this is going to go to the city council, whatever language we come up with, and, and they're going to, to vote and, and make a decision. Our, our comments should, they're part of the public record, they know exactly what, what our perspective is and what we think the right thing to do is, but in the end, they're going to vote how they see what is best for the community as, as is written here on, on the end. The element of, you know, taking into account, where is that part? Consider proposed municipal code amendments, I would alter that to, you know, it says, along with comments made by individuals and planning commissioners, we're kind of counting on, on some of the strong elements to be, for them to have viewed this, viewed the record and understand those and weigh those appropriately and there's, there's no guarantee of, of that, right? So, if we verbalized that, that there is some concern about the noticing, A, the noticing period, noticing, right?
I'd be open to that, yeah.
Things like that, that, that we, or some of us believe that, that we, we have been rushing this and that more time to, to really vet.
Your suggestion is that we have a little bit more time and input in the process to council, okay?
Right, right.
So, so I, let me, let me give a, maybe a slightly different way to think about this. One of the things that was most unusual about this package was the, the fact there was no recommendation about the location for where the residential parcel might be.
Right, they left it up to us.
Right.
And we're taking it back to the.
We have a lot, we have a lot of, we have experience, some of us, you know, a varying amounts of experience. I would rather have a recommendation, you know, a staff recommendation about the pluses and minuses about this location, that location, so that we can give, you know, proper consideration. You know, I, I actually completely agree that we should enact a height, but I would want that recommendation to be.
Depending on where the location is of the.
It depends on the location, partly depends on the location. And it also, again, I would want to have, you know, a professional, a professional recommendation because that impacts the height and, and the slope affect the viability, the financial viability.
All right.
And it, and it has a lot of impact on the people in the community, so they need a chance to say something about it. So, so those are, you know, that's just, just, you know, that's a very specific example of the way in which this package is deficient and why, you know, there shouldn't be anything other than a recommendation to come back with a better package.
I don't think I would go as far as Commissioner Feng there, but I, I do agree that we might not be the best spot to actually make a recommendation for that location. I'd love to strike that part out, so, but.
Any further guidance, got any great ideas?
Any other good ideas here that we can get to compromise?
Well, it's to pick up on the comment from earlier that if, if it were possible to identify specific components of the recommendation that you wanted to reflect in a motion and that would be, I think, helpful to provide the council with, with your guidance and it can represent different viewpoints, but to have a, a recommendation that reflects what was most important to you. If, if that helps create the record that then goes on to council, council to consider, that would be helpful from a staff perspective.
All right, looks like we're looking for proposed language here.
To the city attorney, did you find out what, what we're, our requirement is for.
Yeah, and it dovetails with what, what Eric was just saying. So, our cautious, you know, let's say, the city attorney's preference out of caution is, is given what state law says is that you make a recommendation, shall make a recommendation.
Doesn't say what kind of.
To pass on to council is the language of the state law. However, it does seem to contemplate that a recommendation or a written recommendation may not be reached in another part of the statute. So, I, I think it's safe to rely on that if indeed you cannot reach consensus here. But I think what Eric was referring to is if you decide not to be bound necessarily by the form in front of you and say, instead, here is our recommendation, the council consider, you know, look, these are the things that, that, that individual commissioners have, have been concerned about and we want you to take these under consideration and then that could be your recommendation. Is that more or less what you were saying?
Yeah, and I think that potentially, since the comments appear, at least the way that I'm hearing them, more holistic comments than on, there are specific substantive comments, but you could do a single, a single motion that reflects your joint recommendation. but you could do a single, a single motion that reflects your joint recommendation on the package as a whole with the points that you, as individual commissioners, want to make sure that council considers. And that could, that could reflect the entirety of your recommendation to them on the package.
So are we in a position to draft elements that express what the opinions and concerns are across the board that we have?
I think, I think if we're to summarize some of the general concerns here is, I'm not sure we know where to exactly put that 13.1 acres. I think that's part one. I think the second element here is the fact that we don't have any height limits, so we've got to establish some height limits. I think the other piece here that's an issue is the fact that, you know, I mean, we might not get to a 3-1 vote here, so. So I'm open to any kind of language that would help us at least tell council we need height limits. And, you know, and to adopt, you know, adopt areas around the height limits based on what you guys have. I think you had a reasonable plan there for height limits, but we have differing opinions on that.
One question that I, you see, you raised the question about not being sure where to locate. One way to phrase that as a recommendation could be to build off of what Commissioner Feng had suggested and to do a more specific site planning exercise to identify the location. That could be one way of putting that as a recommendation. But if, or other ideas that you, as a body or individuals, have on how to recommend that council create direction to identify that location, that would also be helpful.
I mean, there's a lot of factors in play, seems to me, in terms of that are, again, I'll just say beyond my scope of knowledge in terms of having a recommendation that I think is sound. So I think all those need to be weighed in terms of just the environmental elements, the proximity to current residents, proximity to Wolf Road, I mean, there's, so. Somebody much more qualified, I think, should make that recommendation.
What are our objective standards today? I mean, I think, weren't you following most of those objective standards when you were coming up with this?
Well, right now, the entire site, housing is allowed as a use on the entire site, so the exercise would be to narrow the location of where that would be located. So that's not something that currently exists.
There's nothing in the general plan. There was nothing in the general plan before, is what we're saying.
This is special, special planning area, so that.
I know, it's an SPA, but.
Yeah, the general, the general plan's concept was that the specific plan would refine, I mean, that was the purpose of the specific plan, was to refine the mix and locations of the uses. That approach to planning has been upended somewhat, so, but it is left without a specific delineation in the current general plan.
Yeah, it seems to me adding a constraint in terms of a recommendation of where to put that 13.1 acres makes absolutely no sense in the grand scheme of the whole project. I mean, I think it needs to be a cohesive, thought-out plan that takes into account the multiple elements. What makes it even more difficult is the way it's currently written. And as far as the GPA amendment, now you're saying the balance, whatever that is, 42 or 35 acres, is all commercial. That has other implications, because then we have to come back for another GPA amendment that says a special plan, no, now we're going to add housing there.
But the first principles is the fact.
Or we could do that, right?
I actually come closer, but.
And we could always do that, so there's nothing that stops us, and I think, I think.
Well, there's nothing to stop us from doing this later, too.
Right.
So, and that's what you're, that's what you're seeing, the feedback you're getting.
Chairman Wang outlined a very clear reason why we need to do it. It harkers back to the, harks back to the 2017 meetings where, I think, Councilman Darcy Paul had proposed some things when SB 35 was coming, and all of a sudden, after, in the next council meeting, decided not to do anything. And to me, it is sort of a flashback to those kind of situations where the city completely did not, left it at a point where it had little or no negotiation power with the developer. And it just reminds me of that.
I think, I think the.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
My main concern is that we're left exposed with no height limit. I'd be happy to just pass a 65-foot limit everywhere and then come back to it when we need to. But I'd rather have something there than nothing, and that's what I'm really worried about. I mean, if the developer loses the lawsuit, right, they can come back the next day with something else, and we have nothing there, right? And that's really why the urgency is here. And whether it's 65, 75 feet, like, if they came back, like, six months later and say, hey, let's all build all full residential, you know, I'm sure we'd open up the conversation on the height limits again. But right now, we have nothing, which means we have no control, which means we have no leverage, which means we can't even dictate what goes on there, and that is the first principle here.
Okay, so from that perspective, where are we, where is the city, I guess, with regard to the current litigation and resolution of that litigation? What is the, what is the period of performance look like on that specific? In other words, how much time do we really have, right?
You're talking about the SB 35 lawsuit?
Yes.
Okay, so my, my current understanding, which is not up to the minute, and I say that because I'm not a, I'm not a, you know, a litigation attorney on the case, is that a reply brief is due shortly, and a decision or a hearing on the matter will be in September. But beyond that, it's, I don't know if a decision is made at the hearing or whether it could be taken under submission and rendered after that. So I think it's hard to really say with certainty.
Right.
And that decision can be appealed, correct?
Yes, by any party, yeah.
Yeah, let's drag it out again. I mean, honestly, like, if we were to solve this problem.
I think we actually have time, but that's why.
As I say, we have time. I don't know if we have that much time.
Well, yeah, I would agree, we don't have infinite time.
We don't have infinite time, and, but let's have something there at a minimum.
So with regard to the height limit, what is a recommendation that some level of height limit be established, along with all these elements of concern in terms of a recommendation, a potential path forward?
I mean, the city height limits today are, what, pretty much 65, 70, 60, 75, the way you propose? I think 75 is like the highest so far. So, I mean, it gives some latitude there, maybe we just blanket the whole place with 75.
Yeah, I think the concern and what.
Ben, the city center structures are taller than that. I think they're 90 or higher. Right.
So is it possible to recommend a height limit, broad general height limit, with some level of caveat, if you will, that somewhat addresses an economic analysis, analysis and viability associated with that height limit? By, in other words, right? I think, I think the way the original plan came to be, right, was try to limit the heights along the neighborhoods and allow very tall heights on the.
Closer to the middle.
Yeah, and on the far side.
Closer to Wolf and Apple.
Close to Apple, yeah.
And Apple will complain about being of the C3.
Right, which, except they probably would occupy all those offices, so, anyway. The, so that was somewhat of an effort to try to control heights in the neighborhood, to prevent massing near that neighborhood. So, I don't know.
Well, we could break up the parcels on the west side versus the east side, at least instead of limit that on the west side, let's keep it below 65, follow the setback rules, and on the, on the east side, what we can do is, you know, give them up to 75. That might at least be a reasonable thing, since 75, if we're sitting on where Main Street is, we're sitting on the other side, which is already a hotel, right? And that, that doesn't impact the residents as much.
So is it, I want to make sure that I'm following the way the discussion is going. Does it sound like the recommendation could be to adopt a general plan amendment that has a height limit potentially along the lines of, using the numbers that were just outlined or something that you continue to discuss? But then the recommendation sounds like, what I've heard so far, is that you don't recommend adopting specific designation for housing until further study to address the enumerated concerns has been addressed.
I think that's probably a little bit, let's see if we can simplify that a little bit and be more direct. I think what we're saying is that, since we're very exposed at the moment, we will apply a, we will suggest a resolution that west of Wolf is 65 feet, 60 feet, sorry, and east of Wolf is 75, so that we have something there. We also understand that that can be changed, that can be changed through other things, right? And an SB 35 process is still valid, so should that, should that lawsuit go in the other direction.
And then would your recommendation be to not make other changes with respect to the allocation or the uses at this point?
I would say we have insufficient information to figure out where the 13.1 acres is going. That's probably the only agreement we have here, actually. Maybe we should just pass a resolution on that.
I don't even agree to that part, unfortunately. I think the, I don't think that the determination of the 60-foot height was based on a, you know, on being viable, particularly when you're constraining the, you know, the ground space. So, so I think that, you know, I have a hard time with this one because, because the problem is, well, I don't know, I mean, let me put it in a different way. If you don't like a 200-foot building, a 100-foot limit is lower than that, although it is higher than what was proposed here. So, I would just say.
I'm going to challenge your economic viability at $5 million an acre. I mean, and given the density laws there, I mean, we're talking about like 15 to 16 million dollars of profit, no matter how you want to slice this puppy up, single-family homes, multi-story, multi-resident, like, if you can't make money on this, I, I'm just, someone show me the math, but it's just, I don't know what you mean by economically unviable. It's a question of how much profit percentage you want to return to shareholders.
So, yeah, I guess, that's a good point. In your view, what is the IAR which they should target for economically viable?
I don't think I would answer, I don't think I would answer that, but I think that.
No, because you are making claims about economic viability.
And for those out there, it's internal rate of return.
So what is the IAR you're targeting? Give me some number, because you made, both you and.
The report, the financial report, the financial report was already saying that for rental properties, there's an opportunity to be corrected here. I believe it's 12%. It was 15%, 15% for apartments, 12% for sale homes. That's turning out to be a much, much bigger number than what you're talking about. You're talking about, you know, making, making $10 million profit on $10 million of land, right?
Per acre? But look, I mean, I was talking about viable housing at $400,000 a unit on a condos, maybe $800,000 a unit for something a little bit bigger, maybe you get a single-family home for $2 million, you know, maybe you got townhouses slicing up for like a million. I mean, that's what's running in the Bay Area.
Yeah, so I understand what you're saying. I understand what you're saying. Again, these, I'll point back to, you need to have further study. This is why, you know, the process we have here is not that we kind of, that the council or the commissions wing it. We just, you know. I mean, you know, the height, the height, this height comes from, well, you know, what's the existing relatively low height that we had in 2005? The answer was 60 feet and 75 if you had retail.
Actually, that's not the argument.
It's not 2005 anymore.
No, no, but that's not the argument. The argument is we have to set something, we're, we do have to set something. We are massively exposed. Should the lawsuit go in a certain direction, we have nothing there, so someone could submit another SB 35 plan, it's like, oh, sorry, your general plan maybe had no height limit, so we're just going to build as high as we can. I mean, that's what basically happens here, right? I want to be stuck there again, right? We can't have any conversations because we have no leverage, we have no conversations because we've made a lot of mistakes along the way, and maybe we didn't, maybe some people have a different interpretation, I respect that, but I'm just saying, like, we're not prepared. We're not prepared.
Just to circle back on the timeline, Commissioner Takahashi's question, September 6th was the day of the hearing that I was last informed of, so that's early September. I just wanted to clarify, because I gave a full month range.
Are we in August yet?
Almost.
Almost.
Probably, one more.
Who knows?
Who knows? It's August in Sydney, maybe.
So I guess, let's just focus on heights, I think that's the biggest one.
Okay.
So suppose we just focus on heights, okay? David, what kind of height limits would you support? I mean, you know enough that, you know, like, even with 60, 65, we can build like a five-story home, which is pretty high, the densities we're talking about and everything. So, so.
It's, but it's only part of the information.
It depends on, it depends on the shape of the space and the slope. But I think that one of the things that, you know, when you go out and, when you go out and look at homes you see, when you go out and look at a building today, you're seeing something that was worked on, you know, the planning process, it was five years ago. Right? And so for me, I see what the planning process looks like today for things that are going to be here five years from now, and they're not, they're not, you know, 60 feet tall, not a site like this.
I mean, a site like this, many?
A large site, 50-acre site, you know? Small site, I don't, you know, the.
Well, that's what, what I was trying to get at with essentially moving forward with 65 and 75, but some caveat with regard to, we need, somebody needs to perform some kind of economic analysis that's unbiased, that says that height, that height is not limiting the economic viability of the project. That was really all I was trying to get at with that.
And that's true, and I think that, so one of the things that would be interesting is, I think you could probably get an economic analysis which said, for these 13 acres, this would be something that is viable. But the problem is, for the 50 acres.
Right.
Because, because, you know, 35 of them are not viable, not redevelopable, then, you know, then the problem is that now there's no answer, right? Because you could, 200 feet tall is not high enough.
Yeah, again, does it really matter what we're doing, what we're talking about?
Actually, I like to.
Depends, the way that I, where I thought you had left it was that potentially you were recommending only a height limit.
Right.
But not recommending that council adopt the 13.1 limitation or otherwise change the allocations.
Right, until there's, there's a little more detail.
I think we might be able to get to a compromise here. Let's, let me, let me restate this. I think what we're suggesting here is 65 feet on the west side, 75 feet on the east, and that council consider economic analysis. Our recommendation is 65 and 75 to date, and council think about an economic analysis along the way. Does that hit the minimum requirements for what we're saying here with you?
Yeah, I mean, assuming that that economic analysis shows that, if that economic analysis shows that on the east side, you need 90 feet or something like that, right?
It could be 90, I mean, I don't know. Right, but at least put something down there and then make a suggestion, like, well, let's say, we make a recommendation that they do an economic analysis, it's up to them to figure out if they want to do that or not.
Right, and then all of the other elements are no longer, are no longer part of our recommendation.
Yeah, your recommendation is that those not be approved at this point in consideration of the other factors that were discussed.
Right.
Just trying to interpret that, so. Okay, how would we read this clean resolution?
I think we should, yeah, we should take a few moments.
Okay, we'll give you a few moments. And it's getting later, so we will be operating a little bit slower, so everybody understands that. And for those people that are still viewing, thank you very much. So, thanks for watching.
I need some more water.
Let's take a quick 10-minute break, get some bio break, get some water, and rehydrate and resugar yourselves. Break, I believe I thought we were, and I know we're live. I just meant your mic was on, I thought we were just having a general process conversation. Please start from the beginning so everybody hears, so. Apologies for that, just for the record, so everything's like kosher here.
Work out some of the kinks. So what we've heard you discuss, and what we'd like some additional input and direction on so we can finalize the language, would be a resolution of the planning commission that would recommend that the city council adopt a general plan amendment. that would recommend that the city council adopt a general plan amendment that would establish height limits within the Valco Shopping District Special Area, and the body of the resolution would carry forward your recommendation to adopt the general plan amendment that would establish the height limit. There's been the 65, 75 discussion so far, that can be incorporated or pending further direction from, from you all, different height limitations there. And then it would continue to say that your recommendation is that the city council consider economic viability of the potential land uses, the opportunity for additional residential along with environmental impacts and infrastructure impacts and effects on current residents before adopting any additional general plan or zoning amendments. And the precise factors obviously are subject to your direction, but that's approximately what we've heard so far in a, in a form that you could use if you want to take that going forward.
That sounds good. I want to provide it some historical perspective. We had a chance to talk to staff. Thank you so much for being here this late. The staff gave me some historical perspective. I wanted to validate that in December 2014, in the General Plan Community Vision 2040 document, the limits were 45 feet for all the areas that were not retail and 60 feet for those where that were retail in that area. So, just to give some perspective, so.
Right, and just for historical comment, you know, the existing height of the Valco Shopping Center was taller than the, those limits.
At the cinema area, yes, correct.
Yeah, so, you know, that's a factor to consider as well.
Yeah, but these are just general guidelines, specific, specific buildings and other things once they go through a specific plan, which is always an exception.
I just want something there in case, that's really what it is here.
That, that's kind of true, but if you, if you come to seek a variance, particularly if it's something that's different, you know, that requires a general plan amendment, you're very unlikely to get it.
You already voting no? No, I mean, on the variance, it's, it's, sorry, go ahead. Commissioner Saxini?
I, I wanted to get a history that when the, you know, in 2014, when the whole property changed hands, what were like the city height limits and so on, inside or outside? I don't even, I don't know if Valco even had the height limit at that time, or?
We, we do still have planning staff here present if you want to hear a little bit of, a little bit of history on, on that.
Yes, Goshen, if you're available.
Oshie, still staying, okay.
Good morning, Planning Commission. If, if I might, just to wake myself up again, could, could you please repeat that question so I can answer it accurately?
Say, in October 2014, what were the height limits in place in the city, and were there any specific in the Valco zone?
Yes, so there were height limits throughout the city. The tallest height limits were 60 feet, which were in the South Valco Special Center, which encompassed what is the Valco Shopping District today, and went all the way to the eastern boundary of the city, and so encompassed Main Street and certain other sites east of Tantow. The, most of the city is neighborhoods, which continue to remain at a 30-foot height limit, so, but the 60-foot was the highest, tallest height limits.
What's the height of the city center tower?
The height of the city's center tower, the, the eight-story building, the darker building, that's about 128 feet, give or take. The Bellagio, Montebello condominiums is about 102 feet, give or take.
And that, that, they got a variance for that, right, of course?
No, actually, that was part of a, a master plan that was developed for the civic center area that was developed in the, in 1984, and the general plan allowed those heights. The Montebello condominiums were developed in 99, 2000, after which the 2005 general plan went ahead and changed the height limits in those areas as well.
What's the maximum height of Main Street?
60 feet, which includes retail, 45 feet for the rest of it, that does not include retail.
That's good, gives us a idea of bulk, what the bulk looks like. Okay, thank you. Four words I hope I never hear again, "Good morning, Planning Commission." Thank you very much, though.
Any other questions? So, back to the staff, do we have to set a limit in that resolution? As we water down this resolution?
You, you just have to make a recommendation to council that reflects what you considered, so it doesn't, you have some flexibility to determine what you want your recommendation to-
So, could a recommendation be that some level, some height level be set?
By council, not by us? Look, I, I would make a recommendation that we go back to the 20, the 45 to 60, if that's what we have today. If people are going to build something bigger and council loves it, great, you know, if we like it, it's wonderful, but it seems to be consistent with the rest of the city, said Main Street was at 60. I think that was the, the point.
The office buildings at Main Street then are only four stories tall?
That is correct.
Really?
Plus that little thing, extension that they put there, there's like exemption there.
The architectural element.
The architectural element.
Yes, office buildings are generally 15 feet plate-to-plate generally, yeah.
It seems like it's taller than that, but-
It's just like in Vegas, everything seems smaller than it really is, or bigger than it really is, sorry.
Well, given, again, given the situation that's, you know, kind of on tap here for the dispensation of the Valco Zone, you know, I don't, I don't see that having the traditional planning height that is, you know, appropriate for a, you know, two-acre lot makes sense in that, in that space.
One could say you go lower, you have more acres, and I could argue the other direction, right, so?
Yeah, but that's not a very, that's not a very viable-
From a viability point of view, amortizing the cost of a lot of things over a much larger area.
Yeah, you go lower. Okay, I'm not going to get into the arguments like this, but-
No, no, that's not true. That's not true.
I, I could go lower and still make my number. So, just-
If you, if you were, if you're trying to go for a constant amount of, amount of dollars profit, say, you're saying, I could, you could do that on, on greater number of land. I agree with that, but the problem is, that's not the way the world works. More land, more land, you expect to make more money on it. I don't think you can maintain, well-
Let's, the way I look at it, if you have a three-acre lot and you build something, if you have a 60-acre lot and you replicate it, whatever you built 20 times, you're likely going to make a lot more money on the 60-acre lot because a lot of the costs are amortized over a much larger area.
Construction, amortization, sourcing, right, labor.
Everything gets amortized for a much, over a much larger area. So, so even if you scale it, your actual net return will be higher on a, it's just economy of scale, as simple as that.
If you can make it work on a smaller lot, you can make it work on a bigger lot, that's all, that's all we're saying here, but, all right, let's get forward. I'm going to move a resolution, but-
The reason, the reason that small lots don't often work is because they're unable to get, you know, sufficient height or mass to be viable. I understand your point.
Commissioner Takahashi, is there a number you're comfortable with at least proposing that may be rejected, that could be approved by the city council? I thought you'd appreciate the hammer.
Very well put.
To start with at least, so that we can have some, something for them to discuss, and then we, you know, I might disagree with that number and point out where we were, but I'll agree with you just for the purpose of actually getting a number there.
Yeah, I guess, from that, in the, in the spirit of, of something that we can move forward with on the 60s to 75 with all the language that was recommended with regard to the viability and all those things, I think, which sounded like, I couldn't repeat-
Would you like to make the motion of adding 60 to 75 to his resolution?
Yes, yes. So, could you read what you had written again for us, because it sounded-
So far?
Yeah, it sounded pretty, pretty darn close to what we-
So, the title would be a resolution of the planning, thank you, Ben, a planning commission of the City of Cupertino recommending that the city council adopt a resolution, we can, we'll drop in the correct GPA name there, amending the general plan to establish height limits within the Valco Shopping District Special Area. And then we'll have a couple whereas's, and then the operative language is the planning commission recommends that the city council adopt a proposed general plan amendment to establish a height limit of-
60 in residential, 75 for commercial?
60 feet residential, 75 in commercial.
Well, 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 that's actually, you mean, 60 residential, 70, 75 with commercial, residential with commercial.
With commercial, correct.
Okay, and are we designating east or west, or we move past that?
If it were mixed use and-
Okay, okay. Okay, and to conduct an economic analysis of the feasibility of development consistent with the staff-recommended general plan amendments, and we haven't gotten beyond that. Oh, sorry, I've left a gap, and then the, the final clause is before adopting the staff-recommended general plan amendments. But if you want to fill in something in that intervening clause, that's your option.
I would like stronger wording around the economic study. That it be subject to the findings of an economic study?
All right. Is that your motion plus Commissioner Fung's wording there?
Well, let's be, I'm going to be clear here, so-
And let's read it again, just to make sure we're all clear here.
Then, then the second, after stating the height limits here, then the second part would say, and adopt the staff-recommended general plan amendments subject to an economic analysis of the feasibility of development consistent with those recommended, recommended amendments?
That's what you're saying. So, the things- The things that are not included in this are there is no division into two different land use zones, right? One area of concern would be that the way that this is stated today doesn't give a zone of protection for the adjacent residential area, other than, one of what, well, I don't know, we didn't even, we don't even have the slope.
I think those are orthogonal, establishing a blanket limit, and if something comes on, the other design elements which have to be a part of any approved plan will, will be there. So, I don't know why you need to mix those two together.
Okay.
Okay.
We have a resolution here. Just read it again so we're clear, so everybody knows what it is.
Just one last comment. I think we're close, I agree. Do we want to add any language that is not necessarily direction as much as an observation with regard to the noticing and the criticality of, of this project? Though I'm not there for discussion. In other words-
How about we pass this motion as is?
Okay.
I'm going to make a comment that says, I don't agree with the 60 to 75, and I make a suggestion, like, I have a differing opinion, it should be 40 to 60, whoever it was before, 45 to 60, and then you make a comment that says, we needed better notice.
Right.
Can we all agree on the better notice as part of the resolution?
I can agree with that because I believe we've got, we have the legal minimum requirement that's there, and there's an urgency aspect to it, and that's why I might not agree with that.
So, in the event that we cannot pass anything, what is the path forward?
The path forward, as we've determined here, is that you've tried your best, and, and your written recommendation is, is the record of this meeting, and, and we will provide that to-
I would support your motion of, we needed a little bit, we could use a little bit more notice.
Okay.
And, but I'm not going to go any stronger than that, how's that?
Yeah, the council has an opportunity in when they schedule this hearing for there to be additional notice or additional, additional actions, although, you know, I don't have a lot of hope. But, you know, maybe they're watching now and, and are hearing this.
Hey, what better to do? Their Tuesday works like this anyways.
Well, this is a matter of urgency, so maybe they are watching.
Maybe they are watching.
Yeah.
So, anyone who's watching, I respect your input into civic affairs, and thank you, audience who's here.
Yeah.
All right, let's go with what you have.
So, I'm, I guess, to follow up on, on, you're going to then-
Make a comment, that's it. I'm not even a resolution, just a comment to be noted, just a comment to be noted.
Okay, all right, understood. All right.
So, we're now looking at operative language that says that the planning commission recommends that the city council adopt a proposed general plan amendment to establish a height limit of 60 feet for residential only and 75 feet for residential uses above commercial within the Valco Shopping District Special Area, and to adopt the staff-recommended general plan amendment subject to an economic analysis of the feasibility of development consistent with those general plan amendments and provision of additional public notice.
And provisions, I think.
For more, more public input, I think is what you're saying. For more public input, so.
And subject, subject to additional public outreach?
Yeah. Sufficient notice. I don't think anybody here would say that there's a deficiency of the legal requirement of notice, but the-
Right, agreed.
There was insufficient public process.
Terms of mailing to such a small-
I would, I would rephrase it, say better outreach could have been done.
How about subject to additional public engagement, which is a clever recommendation I just got whispered in my ear.
Keep going, it's late.
I think, yeah, I mean, part of this is, for something of this materiality, having a proposal out in the community so that people can see it more than three days before the hearing is, is valuable.
Right.
Okay, I think we have a resolution. Will someone make a motion? I think Commissioner Takahashi?
I move we adopt the resolution as stated.
To be sta, sorry, error of motion.
To be stated.
Okay, to be stated.
To be stated.
Is there a second?
Oh, I second.
Okay. Do we need any more deliberation, or can we vote?
I think they need to state it now.
They need to state it first, yeah, but I'm not sure. I want to make sure it's stated properly.
Okay, the resolution is the planning commission recommends that the city council adopt a proposed general plan amendment to establish a height limit of 60 feet for residential use only and 75 feet for residential use above commercial for the Valco Shopping District Special Area, semicolon, and to adopt the staff-recommended general plan amendments subject to an economic analysis of the feasibility of development consistent with those general plan amendments, comma, and subject to additional public engagement. Stop.
There's, there was some wording in the middle that, can you go back about halfway and restate that?
After the, perhaps after the, semicolon, and to adopt the staff-recommended general plan amendment subject to an economic analysis of the feasibility of development consistent with those general plan amendments.
Right, doesn't that go back, all the way back to where we, we started this whole process in terms of not necessarily wanting to recommend those, those elements and levy it up, leave it up to the city council to, to go from there?
So, something more like just simply conducting economic analysis of the feasibility?
Yes, right.
Do you want to recommend some kind of an action to be taken after that? What, what does that study lead to?
Well, the thought, the, what I brought forward was really trying to tie those limits of height to, is, is, does that limit the project from being economically feasible? If so, then to reconsider the heights. That, that was the rationale behind that. In other words, some, some level of, of feedback on that, which I think from a general perspective, we feel it, it should be economically viable at those heights, but that there's at least some level of-
Can I summarize that? I think Commissioner Takahashi is saying that should those, should those height limits not be economically viable, we should do a plan to make sure that those height limits are economically viable. Is that what you're trying to say?
Yes, that is what I'm trying to say.
Thank you.
But that's not what that says.
You're right, so that's, this is much, that's much narrower than I was thinking. So, so the, basically, you're only recommending adoption of these new, of these height limits, but that is subject to an economic-
Right.
A recommendation that an economic analysis is done to make sure that those height limits are viable.
Right.
Perfect.
And subject to additional public engagement, okay?
And subject to public engagement. Where's that AI system that just spits it out?
If I can at this point, I was going to comment that, that at that height, you could decide, it could become viable if the area of development became larger, right? That may, that may be the foundation. That may be the finding of the report. So it's not 13 acres.
Right.
The residential mixed-use area becomes, has to become 18 acres.
25 acres, or some other number.
If that is captured in this, then...
Right, except, well, I think what we're, what we're moving forward has no reference to the 13 acres anymore.
Yes, that's right. We got rid of that.
Right.
Our conversation. Council can bring it back, but that's up to them.
And I think the other interesting question is, do we need to actually explicitly say that we're not making a recommendation for, I mean, I think this is actually what you wanted to get rid of with the staff recommendation words?
Right.
That we're getting rid, you know, that we are recommending...
Only the height limit.
Only the height limit, and not any creation of different land use areas.
Adopt a proposed general plan amendment solely to establish a height limit of...
Yes.
And then while we're finalizing that language, there'll be one more operative provision in the resolution to address a SEQA finding that the height limitation does not have any new physical environmental effects and that no subsequent environmental review is required.
If that's correct, that's what's...
Well, you're presupposing that, I would actually say that you would do SEQA processing as required.
Well, the addendum demonstrates that the height limit that you're considering now is within the envelope of what was studied, so that provides evidence that no subsequent environmental review is required under Guideline Section 15162.
Okay, well, excuse me, I think this is one of those areas where, had I had more time to review, I would, you know, I would, you know, either support or question the that addendum to a greater extent, so, but I think I'm okay with that.
All right.
And especially, again, just because your action is so narrow.
Yes.
I mean, you're, it seems like it's even more clear that you're within the scope.
So that needs to be a separate resolution, though?
It's within the same resolution, but a separate...
Separate paragraph.
Paragraph within the resolution.
All right, we're so close.
It's true.
Yep. Okay, you got it?
Can I read it again?
Yep.
Okay, because I made an additional change.
Close your eyes and think through it.
The planning commission recommends that the city council adopt a proposed general plan amendment solely to establish a height limit of 60 feet for residential use only and 75 feet for residential use above commercial within the Valco Shopping District Special Area, semicolon, subject to economic analysis of the feasibility of development consistent with those general plan amendments, semicolon, and subject to additional public engagement.
And then there's going to be another paragraph on...
And then there's the other paragraph, and it can say, and recommends that the council determine the second addendum reflects the independent judgment of the city, and that the council adopt the second addendum to the final EIR for the modifications to the Valco Shopping District Special Area consisting of the foregoing amendments to the general plan.
We have a second. Any more deliberation on this?
So that captures everything in terms of, all right.
Yes.
All right, okay.
But you wanted to make a statement?
I'm not going to make a statement here, I'm going to say it after the vote.
Okay, all right.
So that we can get somewhere.
Yep, good, good, good.
All right, I'm going to call for a vote here, so... Oh my God. Oh my God. Motion carries 400. I do want to note something in the record. I think it's important for council to know that the, in 2014, according to staff and according to records that are publicly available, the limits were 45 feet and 60. While I don't necessarily agree with the height limits that were proposed, I think it's important to note that that's what we had in the past, and use that as a reference point for city council to make their determination, and as well as, I think it is important to do an economic analysis at some point to figure out, can you make money on that, or be profitable, or developer would be able to build on that land? So I just want that noted, if possible, so...
And I'll make one too, then. Maybe along that same vein, I think the actions we take, it's important for them to be forward-looking. I actually believe that the height limitation, although it may not be exercised, the height limitation should probably be higher, the advantage of allowing greater height is that that actually creates the opportunity for less, you know, for more at-grade or ground level open space. That's something that's worth considering, but in the spirit of trying to address what I think we all do recognize has been a problem in the way the, you know, the general plan was passed, that, you know, that I was willing to concede that.
Okay, staff, what do we have for the fourth resolution?
Oh, we have something more.
Oh, yeah, we have more. There's one last one, and then we have a committee...
Is that it? There's all four?
Well, I discussed the two zoning ordinances kind of together. There were the third and the fourth, yeah.
Okay, can we bring Commissioner Moore back, if she's still out there?
Yes.
No, she is, great. Thank you, staff, for staying this late. Just recognizing them for doing that.
Good morning. I'm probably a little more lively than the rest of you. So are we on to reports?
We are on to, I think we have no new business, if that's correct, and we are on to staff and commission reports. Anything from staff?
Nothing further from staff.
All right. Commissioner Moore, what do you have?
Okay, I attended the July 17 Cupertino Sanitary District Board meeting where the developer impact fees for a restaurant were adjusted. I took part in a transportation engineering webinar on July 23 on the economic benefit of video recording of 48-hour traffic counts. I attended the July 24 Santa Clara Valley Water Board meeting, and I attended the July 25th opening ceremony for young American policy advocates. And I would like to repeat a city announcement, and that is that the Public Works Department is conducting a public meeting at the Cupertino Senior Center tomorrow night at 6:30 regarding Lehigh and the Stevens Creek Quarry. Both have current applications, and there is a pending environmental impact report on, for Lehigh cement. According to the city, these applications have the potential to negatively affect residents in Cupertino, so please attend. Thanks.
All right. Commissioner Feng, what do you have?
The only activity that I had marked down was that I attended the Westport, Westport, yes, EIR scoping meeting. A number of you were there as well.
Wonderful. Commissioner Takahashi?
Nothing.
Commissioner Saxena?
Nothing.
Okay. I think my only comment is that, you know, I want to thank the planning commissioners, fellow planning commissioners here. I think we have an opportunity to bring the developer back to the table, if we have an opportunity. I think that's great. Any options that we can do to create some level of, you know, engagement, I think is very welcomed, and I really hope that in the spirit of this, that the developer understands that, you know, the actions being taken are to protect the city going forward, should anything happen. It's something that a planning commission should do. More importantly, I think it's really important to understand that, you know, this is going to be a very interesting process going forward, and if there's anything we can do to make sure that we can help with affordable housing, BMR units, I think that this planning commission seems to be gung-ho for that. So thank you, everybody.
Anything else?
With that, I'm going to close the meeting, so good night, everyone.